Are you recording, Philip?
Ready.
You're ready? I call this meeting to order for the Board of Trustees of the town of Buena Vista. And I have roll call, please.
There, Lacy.
Here.
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 Rusty Swisher.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Would you please rise and join me in pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for joining us tonight. I please remind you to turn off your cell phones or silence them. Next item is the agenda adoption. Are there any questions, comments, additions, deletions on the agenda? Are you none? I entertain a motion.
We should do that. The agenda is presented.
Second that.
Second phase, further discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Oh, thank you. There's a time delay. Thanks, Devin. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
In the consent agenda, we are approving the water resources master plan. Is that correct?
Yes. And you will note that you have, and this is what you pointed out, Joel, there was a petition to, and this paper on the desk, excuse me, in front of you. And it was just caught late on before you could, it could be put into the final. And you can see there's red letter on the back of it. Five point nine Ivy League pump station. Any questions on that? And are you okay there, Cindy? Go ahead.
Well, I'm not disagreeing with the water master plan, but since they have this in here about the Ivy League pumps station and serving the Ivy League subdivision. I would hope that they're more willing to locate their water leak and repair it. And I know that they're putting in a new meter so they know exact figures and all that.
And I don't think, and I'll go here with the resource master plan, that that doesn't discount that move towards that. This is the master plan. So obviously there are substances, actions that will come out of that. That being one of them. Okay, if that makes sense. Any other questions? I would entertain a motion.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Cindy.
I'll second.
Oh, pardon. I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask.
Okay, sorry.
I'm gonna ask for a roll call.
All right. Rusty Bay.
Yes.
Rusty McCressy.
Yes.
Rusty Rowe.
Yes.
Rusty Swisher.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is public comment. And we could start, Philip, with Zoom if you'd like.
Yeah.
Okay, great. There are several ways that you can chime in for public comment. You will have three minutes and please state your name and address. You can, by phone, you can press star nine. Meeting host will prompt you to unmute and speak. Also Zoom, and we have one there, you can go in the chat box. And so we'll go ahead and start with the person soon.
All right, we have two. I see one as BV residence.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes. Could you please state your name and address?
Yes, sir. Amy Eckstein, 119 Meadow Lane, BV.
Thank you.
I am here to advocate that all American Rescue Plan Act dollars go in an affordable housing fund. So these, my understanding, are federal COVID dollars that were given to BV to help municipalities address COVID-related effects. And it seems that the bulk of the money is going towards the much-needed water infrastructure project. And I'd advocate that the Water Enterprise Fund pay for the water infrastructure project. And of course, I recognize that there aren't any stipulations on how the COVID bunny is spent. But I think it's important for the town to consider dedicating the funds to something that has been impacted by COVID. And COVID's negative impacts on affordable housing is not only generally accepted by the community, but it's well documented in the Mountain Migration Report. And as a reminder, the 2020 audit spells out that affordable housing is one of the greatest risks to the local economy. And the second, which will also pertains to the budget, is the police station. And from the reading I've done, and that's been presented, about 1.5 million will be taken from the general fund, which is about half, from what I understand, for the police station. And so that leaves about maybe 1.5 or 1.6 million in reserve. And so I'm hoping that during one of the budget meetings, the town will consider or ask the question if 27% reserve is enough to cover and protect the town during a bad wildfire season. This town remains a heavily tourist-based economy. And all that comes in in the summer, which coincides with wildfire season. And I just hope that it's considered that it may be safer for the community to use less of the general fund dollars and maybe take out a larger loan. I just hope you just consider 27%, and if it's enough to protect our community based on where our revenue comes from. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next, I, next on would be Eric Gibb. I'm sorry, Philip, I forgot we had.
It's okay, we'll come back to it.
Hello, Eric Gibb, 230 North Gunnison Avenue, Buena Vista, Colorado.
Diane Luke, same place.
So we're here from a volunteer group that puts on the community dinner every year. I don't imagine, I have to describe to you what that is. Hopefully you guys have either been or know about it. So we're here, first of all, to thank the town for all of the support you give us for that particular event. Certainly, Mr. Williams, it does the yeoman's work in putting together and giving us that support along with the police force. As you know, putting up barriers and making us safe for that event is something that the town volunteers staff for, and we really appreciate that. We've done this for six years. Our budget is about $12,000 a year. Most of that is for renting chairs and tables for the event. We had 3,200 people this year. That was down about 20% from previous years. We lucked out on the weather. Every year we worry. We wanted to thank the town. Over the last number of years, the town has put aside in the budget $3,000 to help support us. That's been very valuable because our fundraising and getting donations during the event and selling T-shirts kind of occurs later on in our funding cycle. And up until this year, we didn't have to tap into that. This year we did, and we thank you for that donation for the town. We would like to ask that you continue to put that in the budget. And we may have to tap into it on a more regular basis, and we still, we wanted to make you aware of that. Getting the funding for the event every year is becoming more and more difficult. When it was first done six years ago, it certainly had a lot of emotional support behind it because of the tragedy that sort of triggered the event. I still think it's an incredibly valuable thing in the community and would ask that the board continue to consider allowing us to have that $3,000 for the event. We try to raise as much money as we can by donations, as I said, and, and T-shirt sales. And, and we continue to do that and will continue to do that. I think everybody realizes that it's one of the premier events in our community. I don't think there is an event that has so many of the Buena Vista voters added at one time, which is why we protect it from political and commercial attacks or exploitation. Our motto is just dinner, and we will continue to do that with your support if you'll allow us, both in permitting as well as in financial support. So thank you very much. Any questions?
No, well, thank you very, thank you very much. Take care. Now we'll go back to you, Philip.
Right, we have Paul Aaron's on Zoom. And if you can help me. With that.
All right, Paul should have the ability to talk.
Paul, can you hear us? I'll go ahead.
Somebody go to the next one. Add connection or something.
Yeah, let him, let him know.
Okay.
Just, yeah, Paul, we can't hear you. It's very muffled.
So we will go back to our list here, and we have Diane Luke. Is that correct?
That was Diane Luke.
That was that. Okay, thank you. Reed McCollum. On the spot.
Well, thank you all. Reed McCollum with the Chaffey Housing Trust, and Philip invited me here this evening to give you a little brief update on the activities of the Housing Trust. So I shared some information with you in the handout form. More than I, this evening, but just to keep you pretty sure what we've been up to in the last two and a half years. For those who don't know, the Chaffey Housing Trust were an affordable homeownership program targeting low-income households who are residents of Chaffey County. We are also trying to look at the missing middle, and hopefully there will be some funding in the future to stress that so that we can extend that range all the way up to 120% AMI. Just to give you some context, one of some of the numbers out of the recent Central Colorado Realtors' report. The one that jumps out at me is the condo multifamily and townhome median price for September was $536,000. So pretty much more than double of what a low-income household can afford. And that's the context that we're hitting currently. We're seeing a year-over-year increase of 57% based on the September numbers. So not necessarily heading in the right direction for what we'd like for our local residents to be able to buy a home and stay here. The Chaffey Housing Trust has been very active in home development and sales in the last two and a half years. May 2019 was our first sale. And so far, we have 12 homes sold to low-income households. So we've got a BV teacher. We've got pretty much all the trades and professions covered who are earning that less than 8% area, maybe 80% area median income threshold. Right now, rents are anywhere from 1,600 a month to, told as high as 2,100, 2,200 a month in certain cases. So clearly not affordable. But those 12 homes are now sold and occupied, and those households have the opportunity to start building intergenerational wealth, to start building equity that they can then pass on to their children. So compared to paying rent and never seeing that money again, we're trying to give families and households the opportunity to anchor themselves in the community, stay here for the long haul. And when they're ready to sell, that home gets sold to another qualified low-income household who looks just like them when they came in, so that they can do the same. And the job of the organization is to not only develop these households, but to then steward them over the long haul so that in perpetuity, every time we build a home that is affordable, it stays affordable. And one family after another after another can take advantage of that, build some of the equity that they need to move on to a market rate house. And about seven out of 10 community land trust homeowners move on to the open market. So this is a stepping stone into the market and a real crucial part of the housing continuum. In the near future, we're going to have 14 more homes available for sale. We've got eight coming up for sale, seven buyers currently locked in down in Salida. Those will be sold hopefully at the end of November. And then another six will be coming up mid-gen 2022. And we've got another nine in the development stage. So things are moving pretty quickly for a very small organization. There's two of us now. We hired a bilingual homeownership program director who can do all of the services that are required to get a low-income household through the homeownership process. And that is one of the biggest hurdles for low-income families is that when they decide that it's time to buy a home, they're not ready, or they don't know how to navigate the process. So really critical part of our services are all the hand-holding that gets people to that homeownership dream. When we look at the equity building side of what we do, it's good to understand that as a cumulative amount, so far, $88,500 in equity has been built by those 12 families. And so compared to paying rent, they have avoided paying $324,000 total dollars in rent, putting them in a difference in financial position of about $412,000. So looking at that, you can see straight numbers of what this program does to improve the financial situation of these low-income households. And some of the critical numbers, the average mortgage, the principal interest taxes and insurance, or PITI, right now is $826. That's the average amongst all of our homeowners. Compare that to the 1,200, to 2,000-plus dollars in rent that people would be paying and never see that money again. That's a really significant impact on the community. The range is anywhere from $724 a month to current ones are homeowners are paying about $1,100 a month. And then I've got numbers in there for BV. We actually have five homeowners here. We've got two rental units. And you can see the average AMI that we're touching on here in Buena Vista is 68% AMI. So the ceiling of who we can serve is 80%. Our target is 70, and we're staying under that target of hitting 68% AMI. And the standard housing costs that we talked about, the burden of housing costs should be about 30% of a household's income, and the average for our clients right now in Buena Vista is 26%. So doing well on the numbers and really serving the needs of the community and our targets for providing that affordability. Something to consider is that as a small organization, two staff members were able to bring quite a bit of money into the county to help make this happen. So so far, over a million dollars in grants that we've been able to bring in. And we're looking at another $800,000 in grants by the end of the, or by the middle of 2022. And that's on top of nearly $450,000 in land donations. So altogether, this is the package that we bring to the community to help provide that homeownership opportunity. But really, what it comes down to is the young teacher who came here, her first teaching contract, and looked at housing prices and wasn't sure she was able to stay. She's now got a very low mortgage. She's able to plan her future, and she has the option of having a renter or looking at starting a family or whatever happens next. But she will stay in the community because she does not have that housing insecurity that so many people are suffering. And then just looking ahead at the needs of the organization. Of course, the market escalation has really caused a lot of trouble for us to get the price of those houses down to affordability. And so that's one of our current struggles. We have to find more subsidy. There are a lot of grants coming through the Division of Housing that might be able to serve us. We'll wait and see how that all shakes out, but we're hoping that there's some additional money there. And as I mentioned earlier, extending our services to 120% AMI so that we can serve more families in need. And of course, our biggest need is land that we can build on, and that's really the crux of the problem right there. So I hope this information is useful to you. I don't know if we're allowed to answer questions, Philip, but I'd be happy to if anybody has any.
On this one, trustees, I'll grant you levity. I'm impressed. This is the kind of stuff I like to see. This is amazing. This is good stuff.
Happy to report it. It's been a lot of work to get there and a lot of help of the entire community, not just the two of us. So hopefully it'll continue to escalate on a good set. Thank you for your time. We appreciate you.
Did we want to try Paul again, or are we good to go there?
Let's see, I know.
Did he hang up?
Let's see. So Paul is still online, and he does have the ability. He's not muted. He is transmitting, but it's very faint.
That would make it pretty difficult.
Yeah, can't hear.
Thank you, Paul, for trying. That's all we can say. I can't hear anything, so.
If he wants to put anything in the chat, we can take a look at it.
And he did send, he sent a letter too, right?
Yes, yep. Okay, that's all we have there. We'll move on to the first business item. It is town-owned land focused on Carbonette Street Lots. I think Director Joseph, I believe he started this early too, by the way. Joseph Typer will present the final report and recommendations from Chaffey County Community Foundation to the Carbonette Street Lots.
Good evening, trustees. Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm gonna do a real brief hello and then turn it over. Vice Chair Rick Hahn and Secretary Wendy Hall with us from the Community Foundation. We're gonna give a couple of brief introductory remarks, and then I'll dive into the report itself. So, Rick and Wendy, bar.
You guys have seen me before. It's been a while. Rick and I, just as a note, are both original founding members of the Chaffey County Community Foundation, which came out of Envision. And Rick is the Envision Vice Chair. He's the registered agent, and I have been Secretary of the Board for the entire time. As you know, the mission and vision of the Community Foundation was defined to be a nonpartisan and neutral thought partner, a catalyst for deeper philanthropy, and a convener for more collaboration in our communities. The Community Foundation Board particularly appreciates this partnership we've built with town leadership over the past three years, when you have trusted us with facilitating your community grants funding, matching and leveraging your contribution to the emergency response fund, and now working on this concept. We are sure that you are all at least moderately familiar with the James Place mixed-use development at the gate, at one of the gateway entrances to Salida. Now, this project is a creative plan, not, the James Place project is a creative plan, not just for affordable housing, but for the transitional housing and co-op working space that is so desperately needed. This BV project is also a scenario that demonstrates the Community Foundation's commitment and mission. And our mission is more than words. We are fulfilling our role in the affordable housing arena. And we hope the presentation by Joseph this evening will help you be sufficiently informed enough to enable you to take action. Thank you so much for letting us be here.
As you know, you engaged the Community Foundation in May of this year to catalyze community engagement, facilitate a zoning analysis, and provide recommendations back to you regarding the two town-owned parcels on Carbonette Street. Your primary goals for this exploration were to understand how these lots could serve housing, childcare, and economic development priorities. We're here tonight to present, to represent the foundation itself. Since Joseph has been the one leading the foundation work on this project, he will lead you through the recommendations. In addition to having the written final report, Joseph has, as you know, conducted a community input campaign, wearing his town staff hat, as well as ensured, as well as ensured there is seamless coordination between town leadership desires and the Community Foundation's report recommendations. We're happy to take any questions you have about the Community Foundation and its continued role in this wonderful community. And additionally, we're looking forward to continuing our partnership with you in the community grants program for 2022.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Appreciate it. So as you can already guess, I'll be kind of switching on, on and off two hats this evening. Very honored to be presenting to you work that I began under the Community Foundation back in May and then worked to wrap up over the past six weeks or so. But as you all remember, this conversation around these particular parcels dates back well before my time and, and actually some of you, you all's tenure, back to Land Exchange at the University School District, where the ball fields were, was set up in River Park in exchange for land for the Cleated Commons Affordable Housing Apartment Units. Even back then in 2015, 2016, these two parcels on Carbonette Street were identified as potentially viable for future development in the housing sphere. And then later in 2019, our wonderful Director of Housing, Becky Gray, partnered with you all to look at a few other town-owned parcels, but also these two, to again ask the question, which ones are most suitable for which purposes? And again, you all reaffirmed the direction that using these two parcels for development in the affordable housing sphere made the most sense. That was further acted upon when you engaged the Community Foundation in May to not really reaffirm the development direction, but to really ask community to provide confirmation of the need, as well as affirm you all's role as town government in using your land towards affordable housing, childcare, and economic development goals. So as you all saw in the report, the appendices that were attached, that's the bulk of the work that was done, was working with employers, engaging them through surveys, interviews, working with the Chaffey Housing Authority on gathering their data, and then working on this public input campaign from the town side, all working towards making sure that you feel you have a directive from residents and business owners, as well as the data you need to make decisions. So where all this culminated, and I'm happy to answer more detailed questions on the report and the appendices, but I felt that since you were in the packet, I didn't want to go through all of it. I wanted to focus in, and this is on page 35 of your packets, the desired outcomes. And I wanted to just reaffirm those. As we think about the development direction and potential for these parcels, drafted these desired outcomes to sort of expand on the original concept that you all provided, which was affordable housing, childcare, and economic development. And so expanding on those into a total of five desired outcomes for development. One is to create a minimum of 65 new housing units across those two lots of a mix of housing types where the rents or sale prices are serving households earning between 60 and 140% AMI. Probably goes without saying, but no short-term rentals allowed, condominiums prohibited. And these, these affordabilities and other restrictions would be in the form of deed restrictions or some other permanent tied to the land regulations. We want preferential treatment in the tenant selection criteria and process for local employers and employees. As you can imagine, even if we say these have to be long-term rental or affordable housing sale units, there could be ways in which folks that don't live here full-time, or that maybe you're earning great salaries and not working to serve the local community can qualify to live there. So this desired outcome is really meant to say, we want local workforce to have the priority in tenant selection and process for these housing units. And that does extend to the town itself as an employer. Right? We are a local employer, employing a good number of folks, and yet most of the folks that work with us struggle with housing costs. We want long-term ownership and management to be turned over to Chaffey Housing Authority. I think you all recognize, as Becky laid out earlier in the work session, that the Chaffey Housing Authority was created by you all and is funded by you all in order to accomplish these purposes around affordable housing, deed restrictions, policy and advocacy work, and other programming. And so long term, that's where the housing in this county sits on public land or with public dollarship land. And so, long-term, that's where the housing in this county sits on public land or with public ownership land. We want new childcare space, serving zero to five-year-olds. This is pretty clear from not only data that we collected, but also available childcare spots in the northern end of the county. For zero to two-year-olds, there are none. And for two to five-year-olds, there are very, very, very few. And then finally, new commercial space that's aimed at cultivating and supporting year-round local entrepreneurs and businesses. So, these are the five desired outcomes that rose to the surface for these particular parcels and for, to direct the development on them. One quick note, I'm sure you all saw it, but the reason that we called out a minimum number of units relates back to the site study or zoning analysis that the Community Foundation did, which really asked the question, given the current zoning on the lots, which you might recall, the northern lot is mixed-use to, the southern lot is R2OT. Given the current zoning, what's possible? We don't know, and so, we, the Community Foundation got engaged in an architect who drew up some site studies, I call them, site plans is a strong word, they're just conceptual studies. Those were iterated with town planning staff before I came on to really land on, actually, the site study in the appendix says seventy-five units is viable. And so, we wanted to, in the desired outcomes, list a minimum number, recognizing that we need housing units, we need production. So, that all brings me to, or all kind of wrap up and open it up for questions, the recommended actions. These are listed on, starting on page thirty-five, but on the top of page thirty-six in your, in your packets. There's two options that we laid out for you. And these were developed both, as Rick mentioned, in tight concert with town staff. And now, with my planning director hat on, that's how I wrote my staff memo to you all, which was the first page of my report to you, in which we stated these two options were the most logical options. First one is really, well, I should back up and say, both options point to moving forward with urgency on developing those lots. And the primary difference between the two options is that option one has the town in the position of issuing a request for proposals for developers and facilitating those negotiations together with the Housing Authority and working towards getting that project going. Option two seeks to negotiate terms of a land transfer to the Housing Authority right away, and then they are the ones leading the RFP in development, developer negotiation and construction processes. So, the end result is really the same of both options. And yet, as my staff memo outlined, we are recommending for your consideration option one, mainly because we're ready to issue RFP, we're ready to jump in, and we feel like that might help expedite the, the process, actual opening of housing units here. So, with that, I'm sure I breezed over many pieces that you might want to talk about, but I'm also happy to just take others.
Thank you, Joseph. Trustees.
And in the report, option one would move along faster. Why?
Yeah, so, this is, the primary reason is that I think there's, there's two pieces of this, two criteria or variables at play. One is the process that it would, the time it would take to issue an RFP, get proposals, interview and process its proposals, and then select a developer and negotiate the terms of a development agreement. That process is more or less the same, whether we're doing it or the Housing Authority is doing it. But I think that the added timeframe is the land transfer piece, making sure that we and the Housing Authority feel like we're on the same page with what it looks like to transfer land to the Housing Authority. And I would anticipate that process taking a number of months. Keep on liking it, Becky, for affirmation or other stuff. And then, I think there's also the, as Becky mentioned, she's working on staffing up, and she's got a crazy list of other priorities in the county. So, I think from a, a basic staffing capacity standpoint, we're able to devote a little bit more staff hours to this particular project in these parcels right away.
And are you the staff, or does it involve whole staff? Does staff have time to do it, I guess? Without going, you know, losing it. Because you've got so much other stuff that we're working on.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great, great question. I, that's a hard one to answer. I, I guess I share the sense of urgency on this one and the sentiment that's behind it.
Construction would be cheaper.
Yep, and the longer we wait, the, the higher that price tag gets. And so, I think I am comfortable with the recommendation, recommendation of option one, but it is a very delicate balance. I appreciate the question because there are a lot of other things going on right now, as you all are, are seeing on the agenda tonight, so.
We don't want you overwhelmed.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Burnt out, yeah.
We'll do my best to separate resources and not too much overlap. And I, and I would just add to that, too, that I think the, the sense of momentum and urgency, you all saw in some of the written responses from the public input campaign. There is a, there's a clear desire and approval from residents that this needs to be top of mind and top of mind. And so, I think that helps when, when Phil talks about the urgency. Yeah, we don't want to burn ourselves out by any means, but we also recognize, and I think that, that speak for much of the leadership team on this staff, when we say that, like, this is something that we all believe fully in and want to see happen as soon as possible.
Gina, did you have a question?
Yeah, well, I kind of question slash comment, I guess, but, you know, I was back and forth on, when reading the packet of what to go with, and, and I had that same thing as staff timing and such. And then, then even with Becky's presentation tonight about getting the deputy director, which yay, like, kudos, that's happening. Sounds like you're strapped as well. And, but something that, when I was going through, I was concerned with, if we would go with option one, you know, whatever we choose, is the CHA able to, to, to check that out too and be on board with it? Because they're, they're the, the experts, and I had a chance to speak with Joseph a little earlier, and just that there was the ability for that. Because I was a little concerned, it's like, well, are they going to be able to have any say in this? Or what are their thoughts? And so, it was really important to me that the CHA also has the chance to see what, what we can come up with, or what we would end up picking if we did go with option one with a developer. But anyhow, so I don't think that was a question, it's more of a comment, but it was something I just wanted to point out. If anybody else had the thought that they wouldn't be able to see it until after the fact, it seems like they would be able to also see that before any decisions were made, so.
And, and Becky and I have communicated a lot about both options, but in the case that option one is chosen, CHA is absolutely a thought partner from the go button. So, not only in finalizing and issuing the RFP, but also in evaluating the responses. And then, Philip, do you want to pull up that other flow chart? So, after Gina's conversation, it helped me clarify. I wanted to show what the process looks like in option one for moving forward and make sure that you all feel comfortable with your future touchpoints, as well as how CHA might be involved. So, essentially, looking at potential approval tonight, we already, as you saw in the appendix, have a draft RFP ninety percent finalized. So, looking at publishing that very quickly. I have a relationship with a couple of national developers, and I've been getting feedback from them on what's realistic. What should we, you know, should we say three-week response time? Should we say two-month response time? We have a clear indication that six weeks is realistic for submitting quality proposals. So, mid-December would be a deadline. We'd look, go into a review and interview process. Again, CHA would be one of our thought partners in that process, hopefully selecting a developer by mid-January. And then, the, the real sort of, the details, the details come from the forefront. The next step is, is what I'm calling, you know, agree, negotiating a development agreement. And the topics that might be included are on the right there, you can see a laundry list of items. But this is where we really get into weeds of what are those deed restrictions exactly? How will we ensure affordability and priority for local workforce in perpetuity? What do the terms of our land transfer to the developer look like? How do we ensure community benefit? All the various other pieces, including tenant selection process and criteria, making sure we all feel comfortable with that full lifecycle, as well as the developer exit in the future and how that transfer to CHA happens. All of that, all of those things need to be thought through now. And that development agreement would then be brought back to you before being finalized, so that you all have a clear picture, not only of how the community engagement and design process will go out, but also construction, ownership, management, tenant selection, and then eventual exit and sale to the Housing Authority. So, all of those pieces are still within your, having your touchpoints in your eyes on them before they get finalized. Are we okay, Philip? Yeah, we're just having internet. Okay. Fluctuation, so it's okay. Just keep plugging along. So, I think I kind of went off on a little bit of a tangent there, but other questions?
Thank you.
You know, and, and the first thought that comes to mind for me is this one of, one of the first opportunities town has had to actually look at deed restrictions, how we can implement them, work them in. We haven't had a development of any size, other than single-family or something to that effect, that we've really been able to apply that scenario. The other thing that really seemed strong to me is the relationship between Becky and Joseph. They've worked together, they know each other a little bit, bouncing questions, comments. I think they're, they're both looking in the same direction, and I think that's key. So, and then I think that works in either item one or two. Definitely, it's very much key. I think Cindy touched on my concerns. As the mayor is staff time. We, we have always been, actually, it's been forgotten in the past, and I say the past four to six years ago, staff time really wasn't a concern, and it's become more and more, we need to watch out for staff. And so, that's the key, and I'm glad you were able to, to feel that. It's unfortunate that you came in when you did, because you're staff now. Broad shoulders, I can see it, yeah, carry the load. I, you know, good question and good point.
Dave? When I saw, I'm hung up on the land transfer thing. Maybe I'm misunderstanding it, but I've been having trouble balancing, you know, the, the role of government, the community needs, and fiduciary responsibility. Is it essentially just deeding the land, or not deeding, donating the land to this project?
Yeah, and this, this is a topic that I think is, is one hundred percent yours to wrestle with, but it is this question of what is the value of that land beyond just dollars? We could tie a market rate down onto that land, I'm sure, pretty easily. And then, there's these other priorities of the community, which have been voiced pretty clearly, not only in the report from the Community Foundation, but for years now around affordable housing, childcare, more vibrant and year-round economic development. And so, I think the, the proposal and the recommendation from staff is saying the value to the taxpayer, the fiduciary responsibility is one of, needs to be, and these properties in particular, sure, we could get a pretty penny for them if we sold them, but that would not equate sixty-five housing units plus childcare and economic development anywhere else in this community. So, I think that, that starts to become the question is, to me, there's a clear argument for the community benefit proposed is the highest and best use of this town-owned asset.
I suppose that if the eventual goal is deed restricted, for the majority of it anyway, deed restricted properties, then, then it's certainly justifiable. So, it is, I, yeah, and, and there's some more thinking to do on it.
And, and to be, to go, to be more clear in response to your question, too, the, the thought is, the model would be, yes, we are donating and or transferring land to either the Housing Authority or a private developer. But the reason that we're, we're comfortable with that as a community, as a town government, is through the deed restrictions and the community benefit that those ensure in perpetuity. And the, the asset, the financial asset of that land provides the developer the tools they need financially to do the construction, to handle the project, to actually make it happen in a way that we wouldn't be able to do by just having the cash on.
Libby?
I think it's a great project. In the end, it, it seems like under option one, the developer ends up owning the property. And under the second one, the Housing Authority owns it. But, but you're saying that in the end, they end up the same, the outcome is the same?
Yeah, so, the model that we anticipate, based on other places and other models, and also conversations with developers, is that the developer would respond to not only build a project, but to own it for a certain period of time. When, when we look at Collegiate Commons or Wellcome Housing Tax Credit projects, usually that time horizon is about fifteen years for the private developer to own it. And then, there's an exit, right? They sell the project, and with tax credit projects, oftentimes, that reverts to the private market, sells for market rate, that affordability. So, in this model with this land, deed restrictions would stay with that land in perpetuity. The developer, and this is part of that development agreement I mentioned, we negotiate ahead of time formulas that the Housing Authority feels good about, not only about the eventual sale price at maybe ten, fifteen years from now, back to the Housing Authority, but also capital expenditure requirements, maintenance requirements, and other requirements around the, the quality of that project to ensure that the Housing Authority is inheriting, not a neglected building, right? They're inheriting a quality project still. And so, the, that model, the reason I said, ends up the same. In ten, fifteen, twenty years, the Housing Authority will be the owner. But the intervening years might be owned by a developer or private.
So, you have to, you have to depend on the developer to build a quality project and then to manage it well in that interim.
Absolutely.
Becky has a comment, please, Becky.
Typically, when, when there's a public-private partnership like that, well, almost always, there's a single-purpose entity that's created to own and operate the project. Within that single-purpose entity, it behooves the developer to have the Housing Authority as part-owner for a couple of reasons. One, it eliminates sales tax on the construction costs. And two, it eliminates property tax on the project going forward. So, and the public benefit, so that, that's the cash flow benefit. The public benefit is that your Housing Authority has a seat at the table every time that owner's making decisions about maintenance, operation, et cetera. So, while the, the overall ownership would still be that single-purpose entity, and the Housing Authority maybe only owns one percent of it, there's still a place at the table, there's still negotiation, and your interests are still represented throughout, throughout the, the timeframe until that becomes time to transfer that property.
Thank you, Becky. Is there, and, and maybe it's too early in the RFP process, but is there a way to put that into the, the agreement with the contractor? That it be a local entity, be partnership? You know, you see what I'm saying, just what Becky's talking about. I mean, that can be built right into it.
And actually, both, both of these outside developers that I've talked to about this general concept prefer that option. They prefer to have some sort of ownership stake by the local Housing Authority, not only for the cash flow benefits, but also because it helps demonstrate that they're not, they're not doing anything without oversight.
Okay, Devin, do you have a comment?
Where am I here? You know, it's great discussion. I had the exact same questions as the other trustees about staff time and whatnot. And I, I think option one sounds great, so we can have the most oversight and get something that's going to be great for our community, so I like it.
Thank you, Devin.
Thank you, Devon. Gina, did you have anything else?
No, I'm just excited about it.
I think this fits hand in hand with the realistically, the, the concept of the land trade. You know, we traded land for the commons, the ball field, we got a ball field. It's, it all just for, for some reason it fits and it feels good. That, the, that whole parcel has a purpose. And it seems like it fits together that way. Um, you know, we bring up the thought, yeah, we could sell it and, and do good and we could maybe take the money and develop somewhere else, but we already know the, the, another parcel we have is a million dollars to get the water there and it's probably a million plus right now. So what did we gain? This one here is basically, it's got infrastructure right there. Just makes it, makes it simple, makes it simple.
It'll happen faster.
Definitely.
And if it's housing folks that are working in town, they
Transportation, they're right there, they don't need to travel and makes it easier accessible.
And that, obviously, that was a big point when it came to the commons. Where it was going to be placed is that it was easy access. It fit to schools, work, everything. It's a very good point.
Jeff, do you see anything that would create a problem making the contract? The legal contract to fit all the needs that we wanted to meet as long as you I would assume you would be the one coming up with the contract and that.
Yeah, I know Cindy, we've done, um, affordable housing deals for a number of our clients and there's a number of ways to set them up, but ultimately depending upon how this one gets structured and how you want to structure it, we, we could certainly, um, help with the agreements. You're welcome.
So what we're looking for here, uh, Joseph is a motion to direct staff to pursue either option one or option two? Yeah, and, and there is a small detail that I can put in the bottom of page thirty-four, I believe. Um, which is my staff memo. There's, I would recommend that first option or the first motion, which is option one. And it also clearly directs staff to draw up the easement vacation documentation for the triangle that's adjacent to lot two. Phil just pointed out on the screen right now, that little triangle right there technically is right of way. Uh, we want clear direction from you all together with option one to go ahead and vacate that, to include it with lot two to be developable. Gotcha. And is that stated in, that is stated in option one? Yes, um, that first sentence of the, the V O T action there. Trustees?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt option one from the Chape County Community Foundation report and direct staff to both draw up the easement vacation documentation as well as finalize and issue an R F P for a developer.
Second Swisher, further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Rusty McCrancy?
Yes.
Rusty Rowe?
Yes.
Rusty Swisher?
Yes.
Trustee Volpe?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Thank you. I think it's a good thing. Let's just go a little bit. Oh, it just gets better the further we go here. That's, it just gets better. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a raised hand.
Oh, your administrator has a word.
Just one.
Uh, there is the, uh, the budget implication.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Um, in order to get all the surveying and everything done with what you just gave the motion to do, we also need up to ten thousand dollars added to our budget in twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, yes, so we need to, a budget amendment. Now, do we do that now or do we wait until?
I would take a roll call vote to amend or Michelle, how would you like that motion?
Roll call vote to adjust the twenty twenty-one budget. Um, for this project, uh, the adjustment would be forthcoming. Like gather them together and
In the next adjustment that you bring forward.
But that allows me to go ahead and put it in.
Gotcha. So we would, I would entertain a motion to approve the amendment of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget for ten thousand dollars for this project.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Libby. Second, Lu- Lucrency?
Betsy.
Like there's a T.
I can't say it, that's right. I'll get it by, I don't know, I've got a few months. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Rusty McCrancy?
Yes.
Rusty Rowe?
Yes.
Rusty Swisher?
Yes.
And Trustee Volpe?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is the preliminary design water, uh, report for water treatment plant, J V A consultation. Engineers will present the preliminary design for the water treatment plant and infiltration gallery expansion and provide you project recommendations. Um, are you leading us in on this, Joel?
No.
No.
I'll get this.
He, Manny, oh, Sean's, I'm sorry, I looked right. I missed you.
All right, clarity, this is not the water research master plan. But, um, yeah, I've been great timing. So, so here we are. So, um, I can do the introductions and yeah, I guess first, you know, uh, some thanks to everybody. Um, thank you all for, for allowing staff to pursue this. Um, thank our team, our engineers and our consulting engineers, um, and, and our staff. Joel, Philip, um, had a big part in this, allowing staff to, to move on to this and, and have the time and uh, help facilitate things that our staff needed to do to, to make this happen. Um, I'll go back in time. We started the R F P, R F Q, R F P process beginning of twenty twenty-one. So in in April of twenty twenty-one, I came to you guys at the memo and a resolution request to award the, uh, uh, water treatment plant extension capacity and design project to J V A. And, um, um, that was a long time ago. A lot has happened since then, so I, I won't take too much of the time because presentation um, is, is more value what I'm saying, um, but I just wanted to give everybody a refresher while we're here. So the scope of this R F P was, um, to, um, included the surface and groundwater pilot study, so to analyze our raw water sources for treatment designs and treatment options. Um, and along with that was, was funding and the project needs assessment. And along with that was this, the, um, um, the preliminary design report. And so that's where we're at right now. The, the full report, it's on the town's website. Um, water advisory board members and uh, trustee liaisons have, have had, uh, a chance to look at that and we're fortunate enough to have, um, our presenters tonight. Josh McGivern and Richard Hood present to the water board on Thursday and they're with us tonight to, to share with you this kind of a um, presentation, kind of summary of, of the report. So, um, I think that's about all I have. Um, Josh and Richard, as far as yours.
Thank you, Sean.
Um, one thing I would kind of mention is, is, you know, this is, this is an introduction. So we're, we're not asking for any resolutions or any decisions, but just to get everybody exposed to what the project, um, analyzed and, and kind of, uh, the information that, that it gave us. So, thanks, guys.
Great, great introduction, Sean. Mayor and trustees, thanks, uh, for having us here tonight. Um, my name is Josh McGivern. I'm vice president of, of J V A Incorporated. And I've been the principal engineer on the development of the preliminary design report for the town. You know, Richard Hood, I've been J V A's project manager. So, um, as Sean said, this, this report really came together as a collaboration with, with J V A. Our, we had a large team of engineers, but also with Sean and Joe and Al Smith was a huge help of, of bringing this together. We spent the last several months really getting to know um, not only the staff, but the, the town water system. And, uh, that all went into, um, putting this report together. Um, so we'll jump into it. Are you driving, Bill? I am, I got it. Point at you and when we're ready to advance here. So as an overview, we're going to take this hundred-page report that we developed and we're going to try to boil it down to about fifteen slides in the next twenty minutes here. We'll do our best, but, uh, the first topic is we're going to talk about why we did this, what the purpose and need was. Um, go over what the project goals were, summarize that pilot study that, that Sean mentioned. Uh, really focus on, on the water quality of the two sources that we looked at. And then the treatment alternatives that we evaluated for those different water quality sources. And then a couple of project alternatives we put together, comparing those two, um, alternatives. And then what we recommend as a, uh, project to move forward for expanding the water treatment facility. We'll then, you know, take a pause, take some questions and then if we have time, we can do, uh, next steps if, if we could operate tonight. So what was the purpose and need? Um, currently, as you all know, Unibis is growing, um, pretty rapidly. Um, that, uh, right now, the summer peak demand has exceeded the capacity of the infiltration gallery. So you have that wonderful source in the infiltration gallery, which I'm going to probably call I G from now on. Um, but, uh, that has a, a finite capacity of about one point one five million gallons per day. You've been able to meet demand by supplementing that source with some wells and other things, but we know we're kind of hitting that ceiling of capacity, so there, so there needs to be an expansion. We also know through your, um, um, water master plan that you have two and a half million gallons per day of water rights um, in Cottonwood Creek that the town would like to develop, to use and to be able to meet that demand in the future. There's another piece of this, which is this amazing source, the I G has a potential in the future to be reclassified as groundwater under the direct influence of surface water. We, we call it gooody, but what that really means is, um, that it's really a surface water source. Um, we take the water from the subsurface, we take it in from about five to ten feet below the ground. But it could be influenced by the surface because it's shallow, it's very close to Cottonwood Creek. And what, there's, what this, uh, Colorado Department of Public Health says is if your groundwater is influenced by surface water, you need to treat it as a surface water. Right now, you add chlorine, you send it out to the distribution system, you treat it as groundwater. But what happens when you go to do an expansion of a water treatment plant, the state looks, looks at all your systems and takes the opportunity to to reclassify, to kind of look at those sources. And there's a concern that that source may be reclassified and we need to be treating it as surface water. So that's what drove part of this project. And then, um, what the staff really talked about when we met to kick this off is we want to have redundant sources. We want to have redundant, um, and we want to have a resilient source, you know, to be able to meet the demands of the, of the town in the future. So what we did is when we, when we first got going, when we met with staff, we said, what are your goals? What do you want to get out of this project? Um, and we made sure that every step of the process, we really kept those in mind. Every twist and turn we took, which we took a few during the project, but we kept those goals in mind as what are we trying to achieve here? And one, number one is, we want to distribute high-quality water to residents. You've been doing that forever. We, we don't want that to change. Um, we also want that redundant water supply. We have one source that, that gives us water. We want to make sure that we if something happens, we have other sources. We want it to be reliable well in the future. Another piece of that is we want to be able to maintain staff. And what we know about working with multiple mountain communities is it's hard to hire, um, qualified staff and then keep them around long term. And so one of the things we set out was there's classifications for different levels of water treatment. The highest level, the most complicated systems require the highest level of operators. And we know from just the history of, of the town is keeping those operators around is, is a little tougher. So if we can put a simpler system in that requires maybe less operator, we'll have better chances of staffing this well in the future. And then we know that not only is it important to be able to afford this today from the capital standpoint, but what is the impact going to be long term? Um, from, uh, the operation maintenance. You got to pay for it every month, every day. So we wanted to keep that in mind to not saddle you with big bills in the future. So one of the first things we did was we set out to, to figure out is what is the technology that's going to work for the water sources that we, that we have? Um, one of the things that the town was really looking to explore was cartridge filtration. Harmsco is a brand, but it's a cartridge filtration. It's about as simple as a technology as you get from filtration standpoint. It's a vessel with a filter in it. Water passes through, clean water comes out the other side. There's not a lot moving parts, not a lot to it. And, uh, so we wanted to make, see how does, how does that simple technology work with the two sources of water we have? So we ran two different systems, one for the I G and one directly off of Cottonwood Creek. Um, you can see on the left, that picture is the, um, the service water pilot. It has a pre-treatment filter and a, and a final filter. And the one on the right is, is the I G filter, which was just a single filter. It was great. We had a local contractor in, local electricians in and, and, uh, we were all turning wrenches. I shouldn't say we. I'm sorry. Staff did, and, uh, we worked together to really couple this pilot together, um, so that we can test the water sources. So, um, during this pilot, we spent a lot of time collecting, uh, not only the raw water quality, um, what it came out of its source, but also that treated water quality. What does it look like when it went through the filter? And does it meet the criteria for drinking water that the E K set out? Um, and then we looked at the filters. It's like, what happened to the filter? We put a whole bunch of water through it. We looked at the filters, what's stuck on the filter, what's getting captured? Um, and what we concluded is that the cartridge has worked fantastic for the I G source. Um, I think we kind of went in knowing this. The real test was how it was going to do on surface water and it did not perform. We were getting, um, twelve to eighteen hours of runtime before the filter completely blinded off and stopped working. And I'll talk about why that is in the next slide when we talk about water quality. Um, the reason the infiltration gallery works so well is that it's a very low, um, turbidity. There's really not much in that water. You have great filtration of the ground, the sands and the gravels that are in grown meadows. It filters that water really well. It's groundwater generally, and so it's low turbidity, low solids, and there's not much in it to filter out. So there was, really wasn't any constituents of concern, as we say, um, in that water. Cottonwood Creek, on the other hand, we timed this, um, to make sure that we were doing this pilot during peak runoff. Because that's when we know the most stuff comes running down the creek, the most things are in the water that we need to filter out. And so we wanted to check, can this technology work during that kind of, uh, water quality period of runoff? Um, generally, the creek has low turbidity as well, um, low solids most of the year. Obviously, that can change through storm events, that could change through, you know, fires in the drainage. Um, but, but during the pilot study, we found that it's fairly low solid, so we had hope. You know, low solids means maybe we don't have much to filter out, but what we found is that there's iron in that surf, in that surface water. Um, which is not a health concern, but it is an aesthetics. If you start sending iron out to your customers and, uh, they open the tap, they open the, the bath water and all of a sudden you get red rings around, uh, white porcelain. And so it's an aesthetic thing that um, that customers care about. Um, the other piece of that was organic carbon. So organic carbon is all the, the dead leaves, the twigs that fall down. They, they decompose in the drainage, they wash down that creek. That organic carbon, again, is not a health concern. The problem is when you add chlorine to it, you get what's called a disinfection byproduct. And that goes out in the distribution system and that is a health concern long term. And so there's regulations around that. If we know that we have organic carbon in our water, we know that we have to remove it, otherwise we're going to have a compliance issue, um, down the road. And the last one, which was surprising to, I think, all of us is what we found in that water was these really small microbial, you know, algae's, clays and, and diatoms. These were the things, you know, almost subparticle. They passed right through a five micron pre-filter and they got stuck right on that one micron filter. And within twelve hours, they were blinding the filter. And that's what caused that, um, that filter to stop working after about twelve hours runtimes. So it's not, you don't see it in the water, you don't see it in the, in the water quality, but when you, when you tested the filters and when we did um, microscopic particle analysis, we found that these little things in the water were causing that, um, filter to blind. And so we concluded that cartridge filtration is not an option for surface water. So then we look at what are our treatment options? And so we really wanted to make sure that we started off with, if you want to treat I G only. If you, if, if I G is your source forever and always, then we don't have to do pre-treatment. We can put in cartridge filtration, we knew that worked from the pilot. We can put in mixed media filter. That's what you had in that, um, um, decommissioned treatment plant that's there on site right now. You have, we used to be, um, sand, gravel, anthracite filters. So we thought, can we turn those back on? Can we reuse those and use it and, and filter the I G? And the answer, um, was yes. And then we also looked at membranes, which is a little higher level of barrier, a little, uh, more advanced technology. And that would also work for that I G. We also looked at disinfection options, um, and the reason for that is right now the town uses gaseous chlorine. Um, it's, it's dangerous, um, and, uh, and we wanted to advance that technology to a, to a new system. So we looked at ultraviolet light. So we looked at ultraviolet light, and we looked at chlorine either in tablet form, liquid form, or could we generate that chlorine on site? And so we looked at those disinfection options. When we moved into the surface water, again, it's a different water quality, so we had to consider pre-treatment options. So we want to remove the iron through a pre-oxidation, we want to remove that organic carbon through coagulation. We also looked at a very, if you're going to use surface water all the time, a flock, flocculation sedimentation step that would really help with that. Pre-treatment. We looked at the same filter options because, except for cartridge filtration, because we knew that wasn't an option. And then we looked at the same disinfection options. So those were just kind of on their own, what are the treatment options that we can do to meet these goals of the, of the expansion? And then we put those together into project alternatives that Richard's going to talk about.
Thanks, Josh.
Yeah, so the, the first alternative that we identified here was, as Josh mentioned, treating the infiltration gallery water only. So this does not involve treating surface water. And with that project, what we identified as improvements to be able to hit the two and a half MGD mark and, and the project goals. Would be to construct a new redundant infiltration gallery, so this gallery will be located. To the east of the existing infiltration gallery in Grail Meadows. Kind of a separate system, separate pipes and separate pipelines under Cottonwood Creek, where the water treatment plant provide that redundancy and additional capacity. And then as Josh mentioned, the cartridge filters proved to work really well for the IG water, so that's. That was selected treatment alternative or filter alternative, if you want to say, for the IG only option. And then with the IG only, because the cartridge filters only receive two and a half well Giardia credit for Giardian activation. We have to expand a clear well to get the additional half a lot of Giardia credit that's required by the CDPH. And then the last thing is Josh mentioned, replacing the existing gas chlorine system. And we selected an onsite sodium hypochlorite generation system for that. And, and part of that reasoning is that system is very simple, it basically requires power and salt. So the town could just order pallets of salt, you can get the salts from, from, you know, hardware stores or bulk deliveries. And you just add that salt in a tank, add a little bit of water, and it creates a brine solution. It feeds to the onsite generator and creates chlorine. So the advantages of that is now you're not relying on chlorine deliveries during the winter and when you might be impacted by snowy roads.
Can we brine turkeys and other?
So the second project we identified was the, the option to treat Cottonwood Creek service water. Now, any op, any treatment plant that's going to be able to treat the Cottonwood Creek service water is also going to be able to treat the IG. Because the, the Cottonwood Creek surface water plant is more robust and, and it's more resilient treatment to do that. So what we identified here is, if we're going to do a project, it can treat the surface water, let's go ahead and improve the IG and have the ability to do the IG as well. Since that's the higher quality water source. So the first thing we do is again here, expand the IG, construct a new IG east of the existing one in Grail Meadows, as we kind of discussed before. And then the new thing here is, is we're going to go ahead and replace the existing headgate structure. In Cottonwood Creek and rehabilitate the pre-sedimentation ponds for the surface water system and the backwash ponds that are located behind the building there. So we can really bring in that surface water system and use that source for a majority of the years, often as you guys need to. Because we are using surface water, we need to have some pre-treatment. So the system would include pre-oxidation with potassium permanganate for your iron and, and TOC removal. And then that coagulation step as well to help remove the TOC. We identified the flocculation and sedimentation, that more robust system could be added in the future if the town. Relies on surface water more often and feels like they need to add that in. We selected gravity membrane filtration for this alternative. There's a few reasons for that, there's an advantage, the gravity membranes can actually fit inside the existing concrete basins. That's your existing water treatment plant. And increase the capacity up to two and a half MGD using that existing footprint of those basins. So there's a big capital cost savings by reusing that infrastructure. And the, the second reason there is it's a pretty simple system. The gravity membranes don't have any chemicals or high pressure pumps. Cleaning processes that traditional membranes include. And it's a robust system that's going to treat lots of different water quality that might come down the, the stream into the plant. And then the last thing, as we mentioned earlier, the sodium hypochlorite generation system to, for your disinfectant. So we compare these, these projects in a couple of different ways. The first one was looking at non-monetary items only. And as you can see here, the, the major advantages for using the IG only option and treating that with cartridge filtration. Is the IG is your best water quality, it's the easiest one to treat, so it requires simpler treatment. And because it's simpler treatment, has a lower ORC license requirement, so it would be easier to staff. The, the operators and treatment plant personnel. And then there's also no liquid waste stream from that treatment process. The disadvantages are, there is a solid waste stream, it has cartridges that you're going to have to throw away, maybe every. Two, three, four months that you have to throw away. But there's going to be a couple handful of cartridges that'll have to go into the dumpster and get hauled off to a landfill for that one. The, the biggest disadvantage is it does not allow you to treat and use your Cottonwood Creek surface water. As we were bringing in the pilot, the cartridge just can't, can't treat the surface water. The advantages of, of the. Using gravity membranes to treat the Cottonwood Creek surface water and also having the option to use the IG. Is now you have your redundant sources, you can use your source. And then, as we said, the membranes are just a more resilient treatment process. If you have an environmental dent, mudslides or fire upstream, it's going to be able to handle that a lot better than cartridge filters would. Disadvantage or does require pre-treatment for that iron and TOC. It does have a liquid waste stream, the gravity membranes are, are very efficient, they're about 99% efficient, so. So if we have 100 gallons come into the plant, one gallon is going to go out as, as waste. And we think we could get a, a discharge permit to put that back into the creek. And then there is a higher ORC license required because it is a more complex plant. Next thing, we looked at are the cost considerations. As you can see here, there's, there's, there's a difference between the two projects. The capital cost to go construct the IG project with, and treating the IG with cartridge filtration is about $5.1, $5.1 million. The project to improve the Cottonwood Creek and IG. And treated with gravity membranes is about $11.3 million. The annual OEM cost, as you can see, the gravity membrane option is about $30, $30,000 a year more to operate. What that amounts to is your, your 20-year net present value. So we'll take in 20-year and OEM costs, add in that in capital costs and put it in today's dollars. The IG option is $6.7 million. And the gravity membrane option is, is about $13.7 million. And a couple of things to note here, when we're looking at these two options, to keep in mind is. The, the gravity membrane option is, we're expanding the IG as well. So we're basically doing the, we're constructing the IG project, and then we're also constructing the surface water. Project on top of that, that's why there's quite a bit of cost difference there. So all the costs for the IG are incorporated into the gravity membrane option.
Sorry, I'm just stuck on the number there. There we go.
So working with the town staff, we had a lot of great input through, through this whole process. And what we realized is the Water Resource Master Plan that you guys are all familiar with, and it's. Recommends the town have the ability to treat both the Cottonwood Creek surface water and the IG to maximize your redundancy and redundancy of the system. So therefore, the project recommendation to move forward is, is exactly that. To, to have the ability to treat Cottonwood Creek surface water and the IG using gravity membranes. We did identify a couple of phasing options to try to reduce the capital cost now. And those are waiting to install the flocculation sedimentation, it's not a for sure thing if that's needed. And if the town decides to use the IG water more often than the surface water. It's not exactly necessary to go install a super robust pre-treatment system right now. That can always be added in the future, if, for example, the town begins to treat. Water more heavily. And then the next kind of phasing that we identified. Is we could design the entire plant improvements for two and a half MGDs to maximize the, the full water rights. But only permitted for two MGDs through the CDPH right now. And the advantage that gives, it keeps the ORC license requirement down. So you can maintain a, a B operator license. Once you go over the two MGD mark, it requires an A license, so the town could, once they start reaching two MGD. Then revisit, do a paper expansion, pretty simple process through the CDPH to, to increase capacity to a half MGD. And, and we'd like to, to stop here and see if there are any questions before we move into the, to the next slide.
Trustees.
It just looks to me like there's really no choice. You know, we, we can't get by just with, with what we have. We have to go with the membrane system.
I think more, more so, it's, it's the capacity issue, you know, we're, we're reaching that capacity. You could achieve that, we, we feel like you could achieve that through the IG only option. It does require expanding the IG and putting in the filtration, so.
But if they reclassify our water as surface water or under the influence of surface water, then, and we have to do it anyway.
Then that, then that five million option, if you want IG only, the cartridges would be required to treat that IG water as a gloody. The difference between those two options, it, it both give you capacity, both meet compliance. The first, the, the IG option only just doesn't have the ability to treat surface water.
Yeah, they, so the option with. Relying on IG only, and installing those cartridge filters is, it, it meets compliance, you know, it's you to the two and a half MGD. But one of the things pointed out in the Water Resource Master Plan is having that ability to treat the surface water. So if 10 years down the road, now you need to treat the surface water, the cartridge filters don't do it. So you're looking at a new project to install some kind of treatment system, maybe membranes that can treat that surface water. So it's kind of a, I guess, a, some cost or a cost you can't recover at that point.
Really starting over, in a sense.
Correct.
Can I ask about the liquid waste stream? You said it's possible to get a permit to put that back into the downstream cottonwood flow. Is that, yes, I heard that.
That's correct, yes. So, so the, the CDPH, they issued surface water discharge permits for water treatment plants. The, the process usually involves putting in through preliminary effluent limits. And then checking those limits to see if we can confirm and meet those. I, I'd say it's, I, I don't want to, I don't want to front us anything. On other projects doing that.
There are these other options, it doesn't rely on that only. Right, your old facility, you, you can recycle that, that waste stream back to the head of the plant and re-treat it. That's what the backwash ponds can do. A lot of plants that are located within a sewer service area can dump that down the sewer drain. We don't have a luxury at our water treatment plant, so we're looking for an alternative way of, of getting rid of that water. The simplest thing would just send it, it's so clean, just send it back to the creek and, and downstream.
And this is something that's common with other municipalities.
That's correct, we've done that in other places. The nice thing about the gravity filters here is, we're not, you, the waste is not going to include a lot of chemicals. And that's what prohibits us in other facilities is, if we're cleaning all these membranes with chemicals, that waste contains chemicals. We have fewer options here, we're using air and a reverse flow of clean water. So pretty much what goes out the stream is just particles of clean water.
Questions keep popping up. The membrane treatment facility would still use the infiltration gallery as a primary. I don't know, as a primary filter, is that, is there an efficiency in that, or?
Our, our recommendation to the, you guys have a very, the IG is very unique. There's not a lot of communities in any mountain town that has that level of, of large quality. From an infiltration gallery, from a big meadow, I mean, that, it's pretty unique to Univista, and so. We don't want to go build a plan and say, okay, just switch over to surface water just because you can. You still have this unique source, I think what this does is gives you that redundancy piece. So the, the nice thing about this plan moving forward is you would have both options. But if you have the ability to treat cleaner water, you would always choose that cleaner water. It makes it easier on the operators, costs less maintenance and those kind of things, the longevity of the plant will last longer. So if you have two choices and you go with a cleaner source.
That makes sense. And the last question is probably for staff, talking about financing, how, how do we pay for either option? Do we get to that?
We prepared to talk a little bit about it during the budget, public hearing tonight. I'll go ahead and jump in there since you turned and looked at me. The Water Board did discuss this for quite a while last week. And they did make a, a motion with a recommendation. And so, again, as Sean pointed out, the board doesn't need to come to a conclusion tonight. Just digest, think about it, ask great questions. There is a recommendation from the Water Advisory Board. I think staff likes the idea of that recommendation, but we want to put a little more time around it. Speaking with JBA and, and our other team to come back in November. To talk a little bit about that recommendation. So we'll come back to the budget piece during the budget.
Go ahead.
So if there, so there was a forest fire from Verbit or something catastrophic in that aspect. The gravity membrane system would be better for our water quality. Versus it going through the IG, is that, is that right? Or would the IG perform this as well?
The, the IG is probably the most resilient source to protect against a forest fire because it's, it truly is. Receiving groundwater as it passes through the, through Grail Meadows on its way to the creek. So there is that natural filtration of, of the ground. So that you're probably the most resilient source against forest fire is that. The next best thing would be an absolute barrier like a membrane. The cartridges would, there's, they couldn't handle it if some of that, you know, ash or other things got through the IG and into the. And into the treatment plant, the cartridges wouldn't be able to do it. The membranes would be the second, probably best option because with. With pre-treatment, with chemical treatment, you can create a larger particle that will get stuck on the, on the membrane. The big difference between a membrane and a cartridge is, the cartridge, when it gets clogged, you have to throw it away. With a membrane, you get to backwash it. And let's say it's, it, the water's dirtier and dirtier, you just increase the frequency of the backwashes. So that's, by backwashing, you have the ability to return a membrane back to its original condition. A cartridge, once it's blinded, you throw, you throw in the garbage. So I would say the IG is your, your best, you know, source of water against a, a forest fire. And then membranes would be the second best.
Yeah, maybe one way to think about a membrane is, you could have one membrane set that, that treats three MGD, for example. And, and that's a clean water. Well, if you get a forest fire and it's really dirty water and it's backwashing more frequently, maybe it can only treat two MGD. But it's still going to be able to work and function and produce clean water.
Thank you.
Other questions?
If we work towards the. $13 million plant, what is the life expectancy of that plant?
It's only 11 million.
That included operating costs.
What is the life?
So one of the criteria, we've talked about, you know, funding discussion, but, you know, getting loans and things like that. The requirement is that the, the life of the plant has to exceed the life of the loan. So we can look at a 20-year or 30-year loan for a project like this. And all the components would, would outlive that loan. So the membranes have a 20-year guarantee. A typical membrane plant, if it's non-gravity, has about a 10-year. Because of the robustness in, of these gravity membranes, they do have a 20-year guarantee. That's a replaceable component. After 20 years, you can replace the membranes with the newest technology. But then, we know that that existing water treatment plant, that concrete's been there for, since, when was that put into?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four. We're planning on using that same concrete for the, you know, it's in great condition, we evaluated structurally. So all of, you know, the other components will outlast the, the life of the loan, which we would say 30 years.
Our question.
Yes.
It seems like um months ago, when we were talking about this, we were looking at the option of either uh retrofitting our existing treatment plant or building a new one. And it must have determined that the, to build a whole new treatment plant would be way more money. Is that?
That's what we've seen is is construction.
Sorry?
Yes, yeah, we we've seen construction costs are high and it's a lot of it is due to materials. And uh, we we've worked with contractors on other projects to reuse the existing concrete building. Um, and and it's a major cost saver to the con uh to the project.
Great.
John.
Do you mind? Um, you know, when when we came into this project, right, we um very thoughtful approach and and we knew there was going to be a lot of um unanswered questions if we didn't look at it thoroughly. So we looked at it thoroughly. So um, you know, several, you know, this mass Water Resource Master Plan, the previous Water Resource Master Plan kind of identified, you know, some direction that the town should go. So I mean, that's why we it's why why we why we analyze both the the I G, the the gallery, the groundwater and the surface water as close as we did. So so we didn't have this question coming back to us later, right? So we wanted to make sure that we looked at the surface water just in case when we got here tonight, if you didn't look at it, you know, we 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 would regret that. And we also wanted to look at it for one strong component, the um original um direct filtration plant. That's a plant that was built in nineteen seventy-four, the plant that Roy Gerson used to spend the night in um any night in the summertime before the I G project came in. Um, the 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 amount of staff time it took to operate that was it was it was extraordinary. Um, it it's um it's limited now by C D P H E regulatory requirements that that plant was once rated to do one point five M G D, I believe um per per side. But you know, right now, it's it's maybe, you know, if we were just to say, okay, we're gonna just rehab it and do, it's it's only going to be capable of doing like point five, maybe point four uh gallon today. So it's D rated the way it is right now. So we can't really move forward with that. And I think the big thing that we wanted to know, and we found out, what was blinding those filters? What was blinding that? And that's what we found out, you know, we have this um we have these diatoms, these microscopic tiny little diatoms that we can't, when we put, when we put them on our um uh, we have a, we have a test bench lab and we're able to see how clean the water is. We put it up there and we got point zero eight N T U, point one N T U. We're like, wow, you know, this is really clean. It's not. We have this, you know, this Atlas clay particles that's blinding everything. That's the stuff that our previous back in the day, Roy was fighting it. And this is this tiny little stuff that's just blinding everything. And so looking forward, you know, moving forward, you know, we we see that the um Providence Report identified a few strong points, and this is, that's kind of driving this whole project still, you know, the the thing that Andrew gave us um back in two thousand eighteen. And then we looked at the um the groundwater study that Hemingway did for for step two, and we're looking at that water out there, and then the reports come back really good. There's there's water out in the gallery. There's more water out there that we can capture. If we can capture two point five M G D, we're never going to turn the surface water plant on unless we have an emergency. But looking at, you know, the recommendations with our consultants, you know, we want redundancy. Well, this is what it's going to cost to have redundancy. This is if we want to have, you know, surface water capability and groundwater capability, this is what it's going to cost. And 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 um that's without designing a whole new plant, you know, that's rehabbing what we have. And um, the one thing I will say with the the membrane, just kind of just kind of beat it home, is um, you know, the harm scale units can treat the groundwater. And we can be in compliance when and if C D P H E ever determines that we're under the influence, we have a treatment component in place. It's fairly vulnerable. It's a great system. Um, in um, the time that I've been here, we've never had any issues with it. Uh, I believe in twenty-one years, we've never really had any issues with it. Um, but you know, it's um, you know, it's it's a system that the state has looked at several times since I've been here. We've done um uh groody groundwater and the influence um sampling to um to satisfy that we are not under the influence. But we do um have um to to realize that, you know, if we get out there and do some work, more than likely that expansion or rehabilitation or anything that we do out there is going to put us, it's going to classify us under the influence. Um, the one thing that I wanted to kind of just kind of um make sure emphasize that um if we do treat the groundwater with the harm scale filters, we can't treat surface water. We treat the groundwater with um gravity membrane. We can always come back to the surface water later because that treatment technology is um identified for surface water. So it's, that's with me.
No, that's a good clarification, really. Uh, I think key word there is redundancy.
Um, Philip. Yeah, sorry to keep jumping in there, but I think one of the uh critical aspects to uh this, these proposals that was clarified for me at the Water Advisory Board meeting was that the, one of the things Sean and I are are very concerned about is is messing with the current I G. And um, the proposal, whether it's, I guess, in both of these actually, um, it's a separate I G system. So that it's not impacting, it's not touching our existing system. And so, because I was like, I don't understand how we could possibly expand the I G without the surface plant going, right? But that's not the case here. And that's why that first option is even an option, because it's a whole separate system.
That's a good clarification, too.
And yeah, one of your biggest redundant, or one of your biggest vulnerabilities is there's one pipe that runs from the I G under the creek. If that pipe were ever to get hit with a rock rolling down the stream or or go away, you don't have water to the plant. And so the the both options, all options really look at, when expanding the I G, take a second pipe across the creek. And so now you have that redundancy. So.
That's redundancy.
That's redundancies as well. Okay.
Either or both options scalable. I realize that two point five M G D is significant. But I think even that, we can see, we forecast out far enough that we might outgrow that if we obtain more water rights or can we add more from, I I guess you can't really get it from the Arkansas out of there, but i- is this scalable if we get more cottonwood water?
If 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 you had more rights, then yes. Uh, we what we would look at is the ability to add on to the building, add more, you know, mirror the building that's there, add more concrete tanks, dump more membranes into those tanks. So anything we look at needs to be thought of, you know, thirty years is a great life, but what happens in the next thirty years? So we need to look at that expansion. Um, being able to be being able to add pre-treatment if it's needed in the future, the forest fire consideration, a really robust pre-treatment is your best, you know, besides the I G, is your best fight against that kind of water. So all those options need to be looked at in the design. Um, but you know, we build for the capacity, the water rate you have now with some um thought of dashed areas of like this, this is where you could expand. This is how the pipe could move to the next treatment train so that you have that ability to expand in the future. Uh, that's just good planning, good engineering.
We're we're pretty fortunate to have the I G groundwater source as well. So to your, you know, your question earlier about forest fires, I mean, that's the most resilient source water that we have. I mean, um I think uh there's still communities that are struggling with the with the erosion problems for Collins primarily, and they have a surface water plant and it's, you know, a lot more people to to serve there. And uh, surface water plants have been impacted by forest fires. It's a generational impact. It's it's a, it's a long term uh battle. Um, I think we would have, you know, similar situation, you know, my luck, we'd be halfway done building a surface water plant and yeah, kidding. But uh, the um, just just to keep that in context, I mean, our I G is is amazing. It's absolutely amazing. And uh, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a valuable water source that likely would not be impacted by a forest fire.
And you had more?
Uh, yes, yes, we have, we have one more slide. And I'll just uh, just add, because it kind of ties into this slide, is we recognize eleven million dollars is
dumb change.
And uh, one of the, one of the things we mentioned on the last, I think it's the last page of the report, is uh, that we recommend getting, bringing on a contractor early in the process. It's say thirty percent design. And what that does is is that contractors then at the table giving you real time feedback on uh, cost and changes that are happening during the project. So so if you know a budget, you can work with the contractor to try to hit the budget, or if we say, hey, let's uh, you know, what's the cost for of a C M U building versus a prefab metal building? They can give you those cost differences right there, and we can work together to try to stay on budget and meet the town goals. Uh, so that that takes exactly the implementation schedule. Uh, so so the plan here is, I'm I'm just going to touch on some of the highlights, not read the whole thing, is is we're submitting a a project needs assessment, which is the first step in a funding package for S R F, the State Revolving Fund, or uh, D O L A Energy and Mineral Impact Grants uh this month. Um, and that'll, that'll be able to uh trigger a possible release in engineering dollars to help fund the engineering side of things, as well as uh, kind of establish what uh loan rates could be and whether there's grant dollars available through D O L A. Um, and um, the goal would be to try to reach thirty percent design by March of twenty twenty-two. And then if the town chooses, we could bring on a contract event through the construction manager at risk process uh to basically have them sit down at the table for the remainder of design, as kind of I mentioned earlier. Uh, the goal then would be to work to sixty percent design and submit to the C D P H E, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment in June of twenty twenty-two. Um, and then we can go through a couple of steps on S R F and D O L A. We can get C P H E approval about August of twenty twenty-two. And then give a notice to proceed to the, to the selected contractor in September of twenty twenty-two. Uh, this is just an example schedule, uh, best case scenario, you know, um, there's some flexibility in here for sure.
And by submitting that P and A, it doesn't lock you, decisions you're making or any funding packages. Kind of the reason for highlighting this is, you know, this is moving fast. By fall of twenty-four, we'll have an expanded plant. So you know, as as town is developing, as water needs are growing, you know, it takes time to get that water out of the plant. And that's, and that's why we just wanted to to share kind of a typical schedule with you. Whichever project you go with, this is kind of a timeline that would be typical to deliver a a water treatment plant project.
And pulling the trigger now to, let's say, to move forward with the uh State Revolving Fund, or it doesn't commit us to either plan.
So the project needs assessment is is it's kind of the determination of eligibility. That's where it's going to, and and the best thing for the town to do, and what we've modeled it after, is throw everything at it. You know, you know, it's not a commitment, but if we can't just say we're going to do the I G and then and then later change our mind and go service water, so throw everything at it. We can always back off. And what that allows them to do is then qualify up to three hundred thousand dollars in engineering grant. Um, that's comes out of the P and A. And it also tells us what our loan terms would be, you know, thirty years or twenty years, one percent or two percent. It starts to tell us the funding package through the State Revolving Fund. And so it's the preliminary step towards that. And again, there's, there's no commitment. It doesn't, you guys don't have to make a decision in order to just submit that so that that at least gets that ball rolling and and at least some grand dollars to help you.
And Philip, is that what you're wanting to touch on come budget? Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions, trustees? Obviously, um, and Philip stated right from the beginning, no uh, no decision required tonight. But let it sink in. And then Philip has a little bit more to address there. Great presentation, guys. You you killed it in twenty minutes.
Thanks so much. We appreciate your time.
Oh, thank you.
Did I have another thing?
Yes.
Um, the water, um, the life expectancy of the plant, the adding on of whatever. If we approve this, I won't be around when it's done, but there'll be other people here that would. That is the truth. And what what we're planning for is Buena Vista's future. And when we talked about communication, redundancy was so important in communication. I consider the redundancy in water almost vital. And I think it would be fantastic to move to a safer system where the town employee that is out there isn't messing with the type of chlorine that they're messing with. And I know it is a horrible amount of money, but um, if if we don't do something, we can't produce our full water right. What are we leaving for the future residents of Buena Vista? That's just something that I want you guys to think about when, not just the cost of it, but the importance of it, too.
Thank you. Next item. Item C, agreement with R G A for the police station architecture services. Uh, adoption of resolution number forty-three, series twenty twenty-one, entitled, "The Resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado, Approving an Agreement with Riley Riley Johnson Architecture for Police Station Architectural Services." That's Michelle, huh?
What? I didn't write that memo.
You're going to learn real quick.
There, there's a moment of panic.
She was all, yeah.
Phil threatened not to come to the meeting tonight. I
Looking for money. What do you want?
Uh, good stuff. Well, um, I I don't think this will take too long, uh, but I'll I'll briefly hit a few highlights here about the process. And ultimately, this is a decision before you deny resolution number forty-three. Town staff is recommending that we move forward with R J A, not to be confused with R G. R J A. Uh, so we we went through a process here of, we put a R F P out in August and collected that feedback in September and received four completed responses. And in your packet there, you can pass the summary table of of what we got back. But it was a somewhat complex R F P because we were trying to throw out, like, here's a bunch of ideas the town has. We're we're, we have a good idea about our police station. But if you have thoughts about a town hall, we'd like to hear that, too. So uh, I I do want to recognize that that these firms did a great job responding to that. It wasn't a real definitive R F P. So they did a great job with that, but you can kind of see combination of police station and town hall in the summary here. So I just wanted to explain that part of it. Um, we ended up doing a a weighting scale, um kind of uh core staff there, you'll see who's who's been involved, but looking at the proposals. And you know, kind of came out with R J A and Wold floating to the top for us. And so we invited them in for interviews. And we we thought they they both did a fantastic job presenting. They they, we asked them uh to be prepared to talk to us about uh their experience and ideas around a remodel versus a new build. And ultimately, uh, R J A rose to the top for us. We felt like they had the the right level of experience specific to police stations and remodels. We felt like they they connected with our team really well. And they they're excited. They have a high, high energy level. So I think they would bring great experience, great energy to this project that they were very excited about. So the proposal is that uh, we go forward with their their proposal, which is a a total fee of two hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred dollars. I'll go back to a few months ago when we were talking about this, seeking direction from the board. We estimated then that we would it would, it would take about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to to get through a full architectural and in design process. So we feel good about the the bid and how it and how it came in. There are some other aspects to the project, so it's not just deciding to move far forward with R J A, but there's a few other uh items, budget items that we've listed there. So we have their fee at two hundred and fourteen, six hundred. Uh, we're also proposing to move forward with some site surveying at thirty-three hundred dollars. And then one component that that uh we feel is is very critical, especially since we have a one And then one component that, that uh, we feel is, is very critical, especially since we have a one-person IT department, is to really have the expertise on all of the security and, and wiring of the voltage uh, design and, and to work directly with Michael Hammond and our police department on how all of that's laid out. Uh, we want to make sure, as you heard from JVA on the water plant, we want to make sure that we give something here that we can manage ongoing. So, uh, that, and then the final component, um, after further discussion with both WOLD and RJA, it became clear to us that there would be a lot of benefit for us to move forward and bring on what's referred to as uh, CMGC or the Construction Management contractor into the process while we're doing the design. And then as I highlighted in the, in the memo, we feel like that can gain some efficiency, not only in a good design, but also from a budgetary standpoint. Uh, once we start into the construction phase. So, uh, we estimate that to be roughly twenty thousand dollars. What we would do is if the board agreed to this proposal, is we'd put out yet another RFP to find the, uh, the construction management company and then bring that back to you all in December with an actual budgetary number and a proposal at that time for that component. So, uh, budget impact, we're looking at two hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars. That would come out of our general fund. And um, as Michelle has been highlighting, you know, we're really utilizing the sales tax revenues in excess of budget that's been building up. It's been building up prior to this year, but uh, the board has, has stated that this is a top priority on the general fund side. So, we would utilize those uh, that, that fund balance in essence towards uh, paying for this. So, Board of, Board of Trustees, the action, we're looking for a motion to, to approve resolution number forty-three. And then a secondary motion to uh, appropriate, appropriate the budget to pay for. And I will pause there and take any questions. And uh, Joel, Joseph, Michelle, Paula, Chief Morgan, who's not here tonight, Sergeant Garcia, have done a great job uh, going through this evaluation process. And I'm sure they'd be happy to jump in if you have any questions as well.
Trustees. And I'll just mention that Philip and I had a conversation and we haven't seen this for a while or, or I guess this extends, to this extent, we wanted to show you how the process worked of how different people were chosen, rather than you just seeing, oh, here's who we picked.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely appreciate that.
Yeah, uh, we kind of got away from that. I'm not condemning it. We used to see it all the time. And it's kind of handy to be able to go, oh, well, there was more than one and there was a reason and it just, it just seemed right. And, and this one, this was a good one to point out that way. So I would entertain, beans I didn't hear a question, I would entertain a motion to approve, approve with amendments, deny resolution number forty-three.
I'll make a.
I'm sorry, just one question, in case anybody was looking at the packet. Um, the one, one important part of the actual resolution is that we are still working on the final agreement document. It's not changing the proposal amount or the, the functions that RJA would perform. Uh, but it, it would be, this, this resolution is uh, dependent on town attorney and town administrator approval prior to execution of that agreement.
And so that wouldn't be an amendment or anything. That's right into the agreement anyway.
Correct.
Yep. Contingent, so it's just contingent upon that. Thank you. So go ahead.
Okay. Then I would uh, make a motion to approve resolution number forty-three, approving an agreement with Riley Johnson Architecture to design the Buena Vista Police Station.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Second, Fay. Further discussion? We'll call vote.
Trustee Kay.
Yes.
Trustee Lucrency.
Yes.
Trustee Row.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Boeck.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. And Devin, I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot you in the last conversation. Just unmute and just say, hey, I got something.
But don't worry, I'm ready to yell.
You're hiding up there, man.
Y'all across the country.
And, and. There you go. And second to this would be a, an appropriate, a motion to appropriate the funds for this.
Make the motion to appropriate two hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars from the general fund to begin work in twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
Second.
Second Swisher, further discussion? And Michelle, this will go in with the next, if it passes, we'll go in with the next amendment, correct? Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Lucrency.
Yes.
Trustee Row.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Boeck.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. It's good to see this one moving forward also. It's a good night, folks.
Big night.
Now we've got Grant bringing up bears. Yep. You just can't get any better than that. Now, next we will have an update on the bears and trash. Board will hear an update regarding bears in town and issue with trash and discuss options for penalties related to unsecured trash. Don't look that way, Grant.
What's that stuff?
You had your bear face on, man.
Oh. Thanks.
Better than fair or other parts.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, last February, we discussed trash and bears and the time we decided to see how the summer went and then look, look through some projects with the town and the parks and see how well the summer goes. I'm here tonight to give the update, um, as well as make some recommendations to our code that might help address this issue. Um, with the update in the town parks, we did get some new trash cans in our town parks, especially at Columbine Park, otherwise known as Case Park. We did see a really good improvement in all of our parks with these new trash cans as far as bears not getting into them as readily and not as much of a bear issue in the park with these new trash cans. Um, but we still do have some work to do with our dumpster situation, just making sure that we are doing, always getting better at protecting wildlife and our trash across town. Um, we didn't have as much activity as we usually do, but we also had a wetter summer than we usually do. Uh, this kept bears pretty fat and happy on natural feed and not moving into town as quickly as they would during a drought year. Uh, during every fall, we do have a big fruit population that comes up with our trees. And then as they go through a stage known as hyperphasia, as they're getting ready to hibernate is when they do come into town and really start looking at trash. We do have, we were able to ID an area of town that seems to have the biggest concentration and pay attention in there. And with the help of CPW and some citizens in those areas, we have started working on education as well as documentation and um, working with the citizens to address these issues as they come up. What we did learn is uh, although we do have a really good nuisance code that we have worked on, this is an area that we feel we could work, do a better job on as far as how we address animals and trash. Um, we looked at different codes from around the state, including Boulder, Durango, and east of I-25 in Colorado Springs, as far as how they address and look at bears. And what we learned was uh, there are two real options out there. One is to require bear resistant trash cans. And the other is to tighten up our code just a bit and move uh, trash into a penalty assessment. With the bear resistant trash cans, seems like a good idea, but what we learned through talking to vendors that service areas, it would be a cost onto each um, citizen or uh, any person that gets trash service, it would be an additional cost to them, to the two, two hundred, four hundred dollars, depending on who they're with and what kind of can they get. Um, didn't feel like this is really fair toward the citizens and puts a burden on them that we'd rather not put on them, where we feel like tightening up our code and making litter into a penalty assessment um, could address the issue and make it easier for code enforcement to get out there and address those issues quicker instead of putting it into court, again, put it in as a penalty assessment. Um, we feel like this goes right in hand with the comp plan that we wrote in twenty fifteen. Um, the second paragraph in the environment um, states, I'm going to pull it up my computer real quick. "The community has voiced the desire for the local government to be a partner in pursuing environmental stewardship. By foregoing a partnership, the community will ensure by acting in an environmentally conscientious way to become a widely accepted practice approach applied in how we live, work, and play." As well as we feel this meets goal three, um, in that of supporting local initiatives and neighborhood level activities aimed at addressing some areas of environmental concern. Um, with that, we're asking the board if you, you'd like these changes proposed, if you want to see it move forward, if you want to see, keep everything as it is. Um, just looking for direction from the board on this issue. I'll open it up to questions and comments.
Trustees.
Makes a lot of sense.
I like the penalty approach rather than the two hundred, four hundred dollars per household.
It seems, it seems equitable, I guess, best way to put it. You have the option to control that cost as compared to us forcing the cost. It just seems equitable. Uh, Devin, do you have anything?
Yeah, there's lots of bears. We gotta take care of the bears and Grant is on top of it, so. I have, it's a very thorough report and I agree with the other trustees.
So, Grant, we're looking for, um, basically, we want to just tighten up our code.
Tighten up the code to read more in the litter in section seven dash eleven more. If your trash causes litter, then a separate penalty would be assessed to the property. I'm kind of working with that language and of course be working with Jeff and Legal on how to uh, word it the best way and address the needs we were looking for.
Would that also be an update in the fee schedule or is that just in a penalty? It wouldn't be a fee, correct?
We could keep it as the fee as we have in the penalty assessment of twenty-five dollars plus the surcharge. It comes up to about forty dollars for a penalty assessment as we have now, or the board could choose to make a separate line in the fee uh, schedule and make this a separate fee.
And, and Jeff, what about how stiff the penalty can be?
Uh, two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars is your maximum penalty. Um, so you got a lot of room.
Okay.
Making more important.
Okay, um, board, uh, directions for Grant. I take a motion.
I'd like to, um, to make a motion that, that we uh, direct the town staff to come up with a penalty for trash cans that cause litter, whether it be through weather or negligence or animal uh, intrusion.
Thank you.
Second.
See Fay, Lucrency. Second, further discussion? And I, um, I believe that is the intent. Trash does cause litter. And so we're looking at the litter aspect, whether it's animal or not. Thank you. And then Grant can bring forward possible penalties. And, and Grant, I'm thinking graduated. First time you failed, second time, does that make sense, that kind of thing?
Okay, look at a grad. I was going to ask for a clarifier. Are we looking at keeping a penalty assessment, what we have or higher? And what the board is kind of feeling right now, so we can address or uh, put that forward in the next discussion.
Comments?
Well, this is a life or death question for the bears. So, I would say it should be a fairly significant amount, like uh, fifty and a hundred and fifty and three hundred.
So you're thinking a, a, a pure occurrence approach is what you're. And I think, I think that's, that's there again. I think that's equitable, so you get it one time. And if you didn't cure it, you get a second time. And if you didn't cure it, then it just, it, you know, it hurts. Does that sound good, Grant?
Yep, I can work with Legal on that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item. Oh, I'm sorry, we did a second, didn't we? Okay. You want a roll call?
We can do a roll call.
Shoot, your roll call.
Okay, trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Lucrency.
Yes.
Trustee Row.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Boeck.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I walked right by that. Not, not far. Uh-uh, not far. I just can't wait to hear from Joel.
Another light topic.
Oh, it's just, you know. It, it just gets me going. Okay, next item I'm already agenda is the master plan considerations regarding water. Uh, we will discuss next step regarding water resources master plan.
Oh yeah, if I could turn it over to Dave Welpi. I made a motion. Just kidding.
Yeah.
Um, so we had a couple of great presentations and discussion items. One, uh, with Joseph and housing and creating the, um, you know, the potential project coming up and the issues with our housing. And then we had uh, Sean and RJA with the, okay, KVA?
KVA.
KVA. With the water treatment and the expansion and what to do and how to convert our two and a half million gallons a day water rights into usable water and things. And so, um, and we had the approval, thank you, for the adoption of the Water Resource Master Plan, which had some fantastic information. But all of this uh, combined raises some interesting questions. And so, so this, this evening are a few things to think about. And um, I have in kind of a few touch point questions that maybe you guys could give some feedback on this evening. Um, give feedback on anything. Um, and then there's some really just to ponder, because there maybe uh, maybe requires a little more pondering and hopefully we have a work session at the very beginning of February. So, um, so I, with Sean and Joseph, these are in the, in the water and the housing, these are, uh, it's called a dyad. There are these like competing interests. The streams might cross, right? And when you've got the streams crossing to borrow the Ghostbusters, you've got this issue of, um, they're just kind of competing issues of housing and, and water. Water is a limited resource. We only have so much of it. So, um, so thinking back to the Water Resources Master Plan, there were those, those uh, three different growth scenarios presented. One was one point three percent, which was twenty-five to thirty SFEs per year of growth. One was about fifty SFEs per year of growth. And one was current seventy, seventy plus SFEs per year of growth. So, those are um, three different uh, growth scenarios. And then we also had three different water supply scenarios. One was um, an average year. One was a dry year and one was a dry year if we had twenty percent conservation somehow. Okay, which was not a scientific number. It was just a number selected for the illustrated purposes, right? So, so the, the, the question first is, you know, what kind, which of these scenarios are we going to think about for town? Um, and we have to kind of base that, ponder that and base that really on um, that collective vision statement, which is what town is using as our guide, that collective vision and the comp plan came from that. Um, it speaks to the size of town, the infrastructure needed, how to support people and the economy, et cetera. How to phase in different ideas, like we were discussing this evening with the treatment plant. Okay, so there's some things to ponder. Framing that, um, that's kind of the framing that we have. And within that, I, I'd like to draw the attention to really these four buckets of water that, that, um, at least for me, it's so complex that I have to try to think about it in these separate units, but that kind of, they weave together. So we've got the first is, um, and, and these help direct staff to try and guide like, what water do we pursue? What kind of treatment plan do we pursue and these other things? So start thinking about this, continue to, trustees. So one is the current capacity. We talked a lot about that tonight. This is just how much water we can produce. Okay, how much are we going to? Is it one, one and a half million gallons, two million gallons, whatever? This is the current capacity. And what type of upgrade are we going to do? based on our desired state? Because we could probably spend like eighty million dollars if we wanted to, right? To what end? It has to kind of match where we want to go. The second bucket is just looking at existing senior water rights. We have three point eight eight. Um, in dry year, we have three point zero CFS of water. Okay, so how do we eke those out? Do we eat them out over time? Do we eat them out in certain types of development, et cetera? How do we do that? Um, the second is getting creative with some of the junior rights, like the uh, dry field ditch that we have. Um, potentials for that with augmentation. Maybe there's a way we can trade with St. Charles Mesa that, remember I said we had three point eight eight CFS except dry area of three. There's a point eight 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 that we lose to St. Charles Mason that dry year. Maybe there's a way we can get creative with that, which we're trying to do. That's another bucket. The fourth bucket is finding new senior water rights. Um, and we can convert those for more more growth potential. That could be on the Arkansas, it could be on Cotton Creek. Or some other source. Four buckets of water. Next slide, Philip, please. So this gets into some of the questions really in that memo for um, I I put four up here. Trying to get some feedback this evening and I'll I'll go through these and then I'll go to the second one. We'll go back to these if you guys want to discuss them, but um, wondering, do you want to talk about any of these sooner? And the other ones maybe later. The first, we were thinking maybe it would be worthwhile to do kind of an in-house comprehensive plan to help give some umbrella, some guardrails for what is it that we as a community, not just us, but what is it as a community? What are we trying to accomplish? And we can, Joseph's confident we can do that in-house. We need to start that process. It may require a complete rewrite of that collective vision statement, maybe not, but that's what that's the only thing we have right now. Because that'll then tell us how big do we want? Eight thousand people? Do we want? You know, kick people out? Just kidding. The Ghostbuster thing, man. The other thing is um, we need to get a water rate study. We need to water rate study in a conservation planning effort, but the water rate study will inform um, so well, it'll inform how much we should be charging rate users for current capacity or um, replacing water lines and those kinds of things. It's really important to do that regularly. Especially to match the the water resource master plan, because our current rate study was based on one or two ago, right? And with that, we can also do a tiered rate, a more maybe a different tiered rate study where uh, you charge a base rate and then you're charged a little bit more for every unit or thousand units or whatever of water that you use, so that that builds in some incentives for conservation. You know? So water rate study. We're also thinking, you know, if we take that dry year without conservation limit, there's only so many SFEs out there right now, right? Do do should we think about? Because uh, infill i- is encourages less infrastructure, less staff time over the long run, but also it should be less expensive to build. Do we want to try and dedicate? Kind of earmark some of the SFEs to um, like Old Town or something. East of Tabor, south of Arkansas or something like that. Let's take X number and just say, hey, these are um, kind of set aside because we can see that like some development can happen all over town. You know, where where do we want town to happen? And is there a certain certain area that maybe we set aside earmark some of these? The fourth one is, do we want to um, start a planning effort related to conservation? And and what, when does that happen? Should we get going maybe on, maybe after a water rate study and the kind of the comprehensive plan idea? Okay, then the conservation plan can, or the comprehensive place of the conservation plan can inform that. Separating those out, if we try and do water rate and conservation, they kind of inform each other, but if we do both together, it'll be at least a year before we get a product from that. We probably want to start sooner and later. So that's part one. Things to ponder tonight, if you want to discuss any of those or give direction or not, is fine too. Okay. Two other questions to consider as a February uh, work session approaches that we're that we're planning, so. And these can happen anytime. It doesn't matter. Related to capacity expansion. Annual growth, he saw that uh, his slide this evening was uh, Robert was saying that it's twenty twenty four, fall of twenty twenty four, we'll have that done. Um, well, when are we going to reach the limit of capacity for the current treatment facility? It's hard to say, because if you have a leak, uh, it's a, I mean, we could reach it right away. But if we don't have a leak, we got some time. But we don't have a lot of time, right, Sean? Right, so we're talking at least three years out. Do we just let building happen until we reach it and then we say no more building? Do we eat that out a little bit? Say, hey, we'll give so much development this year or that year or that year. Things to ponder. Also, things to ponder. Lots of things to ponder, you guys. And and I am so sorry that all of this is coming uh, just
What a meeting.
In the universe, right? But it's it's stuff we have to think about. And I mean, we we don't get a lot of sleep thinking about some of this stuff, but we have to. Like you guys are entrusted to do these decisions, so. The other is there's an option, if we want to encourage certain types of development, certain types of housing need, we can tie water allocation to developments as kind of this inclusionary housing. Wonder. And then the last um, so given our current, just the senior supply, that's that second bucket we were talking about existing, not really building in that creativity with junior rights yet, which may or may not have an outcome favorable to us. Do we um, think about setting a kind of limit of we can only allocate so many SFEs? And it that is the dry year number, that is ninety percent of the dry year number, that's the average year number, that's the my God, it's been raining all summer number. What do we want to ponder? Any kind of a um, proactive look where we say, you know what? When we hit this number, um, unless the the, you know, we're holding all the other con- variables constant, right? And if we hit this number, yeah, we're gonna can be able to do more SFEs or let's just see how things roll and continue on um, and just keep trying, you know, and and not worry about that and future town can work. Things to think about. And I'll see you guys, so you guys can.
So so thinking about that um, number three, bullet point three there. Would you? How would you look at that as if so, let's say we hit that threshold, you would put a moratorium on any more new permits being issued? Is that how you would? So everything that's already there issued, you would say, wait a minute, that's going to hit that in a dry year. We stop. That's kind of how you would address that if you were to approach that aspect. Kind of, does that make sense?
Yeah, if you like, holding all other variables constant, if you had, we have one hundred SFEs in town. And um, we can say when we hit that hundred, we don't have any more water.
Right.
Or we can say, well, uh, maybe we don't really know what's gonna happen with the climate change or whatever. And so when we hit, said one hundred, we hit ninety five.
Yep.
Do that. Or we say, yeah, you know, we've only hit a dry year, what, three in the last twenty something? And so let's just do average year. Roll the dice and see what happens, right?
Yeah. Yeah, you start playing a game. Um, trustees.
I've got two.
Only two?
Only two. But they're probably one's more complicated. They're both more complicated. First one, the number of SFEs that we're using was eighteen sixty to whatever it is. That's current built structures. That's not platted lots. The, correct, it's not platted, okay. Do we have any responsibility to platted lots? Somebody's owned a lot here for five hundred years or what? A hundred years. Do we have any responsibility to provide water to somebody that has a platted lot in town currently?
No.
No.
Not unless they purchased a
a tap.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
Unless they.
Okay, yeah.
Right, it's a strange
Good point.
Strange thought.
There is, there is one agreement. Right?
Well, there's um, there's the hundred fifteen water taps at the Big Meadow. But Jeff has clarified that that is a tap, but that doesn't mean we have to provide water to. Right? And so that is out of that picture. It's kind of first come, first served. There's a I think the same goes, Jeff, you can clarify. I think the same goes for the um, Colorado Center as well. Because there's a uh, it's a PUD and the vested rights are still in there. But Jeff, are you there?
Yeah, yeah, I'm right here. And I'm not a hundred percent sure I understood your comment um, that it's a tap, but we don't have to provide water. I think the the basic, I think what I had said, and I want to make sure that I'm not misquoting my own self to you, but on was that, you know, if the town doesn't have water, um, the fact that it basically has issued taps to um, uh, development that have not yet been connected um, doesn't mean that the town is obligated to provide the water. I think that's what I'd said, but I'm not sure I fully understood your comment there.
I'd I like to think that that's what I said too.
I don't want anybody to think that if they've got a tap for their house, that the town that it's meaningless and the town's not going to give you water. Um, so just to be clear.
So little that little nuance, but yes, that 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 statement is true. I'm not obligated to provide water.
Okay.
If we don't have.
And we can visit that during the discussion. The second one is farther out, but I think that it's important to somehow involve the county in this. If we somehow, you know, the county is is developing land use codes or or incentives or whatever to direct development to the urban areas here in Ponchatz, Salida. If we tell everybody no, it just sends it back out into the county. And then what? I mean, I I it just, it just seems like we're we're, if we if we stop on the problem here, it's just going to shift it somewhere else, so.
No, it's uh, we've been having those same conversations internally and um, starting the same conversation with other folk, but it's it's kind of hard to have those because the county doesn't provide the water. The upper arm provides water. So it's multiple jurisdictions that have to figure it out. And there's different ideas of what is what is rain, right? And water and drought. And they're different ideas and they don't necessarily line up.
Conversations.
Uh, your
That was it?
Point.
Yes, oh, good point.
Cool.
Go ahead, Gina.
I think going back to was the part one in your first question, um, which was kind of like, I think, I think the essence of it was like, well, what do we want it to be? Is going along with the plan and and do we want to relook at that? I think that kind of is the triple down effect for everything you're kind of talking about here. It's um,
Comprehensive plan idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, where's that one at, Philip? There we go.
Oh, there it is.
There you go. Yep.
Because, yeah, I mean, we're talking about obviously the water plan and everything's like, well, how much? Kind of like you said, we think we could throw tons and tons of money at it and we can buy up tons of stuff. We really won, I guess, if that's well, it might be harder said than done, but but do we need to have all that if we don't intend to grow to a certain amount, you know, and so um, so finding out where those, like you had said, the guardrails is really important before kind of moving on on all kinds of things. Um, uh, but yeah, I think water's the this staple that's going to make or break the town and what we're able to do, so. Um, so I don't really have an answer for it, but I really liked that question and and taking, I don't know if that is a work session or or in-house conversation or to think a little bit more on that, because we are talking about, um, as you had mentioned Cindy, just the big future topics that are going to change a lot of things potentially. And so really having that defined, um, whether that's an update or whatever is probably good, at least take a second look at maybe if if anything.
I just want to jump in there. I really appreciate that comment. And I I just want to reiterate something I think Joel alluded to, that these questions are were discussion points are were already numbered one through four, but um, they don't necessarily, I guess that doesn't necessarily recommend they roll out in that fashion because something like an comprehensive plan, either update or redo or, you know, new one. That's a a multi-month endeavor. You know, that's six to nine months or so of really robust community conversations. Whereas a water rate study, from what I understand, is a number of weeks to complete and would give us actionable data to address a piece of this pie soon. And so I just want to kind of reiterate that aspect of this piece that we're not saying either or or one through four in that order. It's sort of, these are all good things to look at and might need to be addressed in different orders.
You know, and when I first saw that in and I'll just say, you know, do you want staff to bring these back? Yes. Yeah, it's first thing comes to mind, sure. Then you, just what you're saying and what you said, Joel. Um, yeah, but in what order? To throw the blanket over all of them and say, bring it back, take a long time to get it all put together. And so that's the ask of the trustees of that. And and Joseph touched on it. Um, you know, the ASAP, you look at that, that that could be the quickest return and give a direction. Um, that and then I think it was touched on, and I will say maybe Paul brought it up, that conservation can be a very quick water saver. You know, just by conserving water, you're saving water. So that's another one that can be touched on when you start thinking of those things. They're all important, everyone of them. I also you know, earmarking SFEs for infill. Um, I cannot remember, and I'm sorry, I cannot remember the group that gave the presentation.
Uh, smart cities.
Smart cities.
Smart towns, yeah. Yeah, where they were talking about the expense of running infrastructure way out.
And 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 when I look at that, this this close infrastructure, even that and Sean and I, I'm going to assume a little bit here. Uh, when you're tying into some of this infill infrastructure, that may be upgrade time. You know, for if they're old lines and they need to be resized and things like that, it's still cheaper to do that then than it is to wait for two years and and find out you needed to do it. So I mean, I just kind of look at that earmarking infill also as being very important. It's the most economical for town. Plus, it's also I think Dave, you kind of touched on it. Um, the fact that that land was plotted how many, how long ago? As the base, as the base town, you know what I'm saying? And if you think about it, that doesn't mean that you ignore the other ones, but if if you think what's best for town, most economical things like that, that comes into play real quick for me. I I just see that. Um, we talked one time, Joel, and I don't know if we can do this. Jeff maybe can maybe it's statute and we can't about picking just a portion of comprehensive plan and redoing it, not the whole plan. And I don't know if that's feasible or possible.
You you can, you can update any parts of the comprehensive plan you want. You just have to follow the statutory process, which basically it's done by a planning commission subject to trustee approval, so.
We we are. We, we are instead of redoing the whole comp plan, you just pick water and just redo water. You know, that's, that's my thought. That that would say, it's still gonna take a long time. It's not gonna be quick, but it wouldn't be the whole comprehensive plan redo. Not saying we ain't due for it.
Well, and I think the only, the only thought that comes to my mind within that regard is I agree there's, you know, a part that could be. Made more robust and or revisited specifically around water. I think the, the deeper questions though, that water forces us to talk about. Are more of that long-term vision question that then opens up the entire comp plan necessarily.
And, and earmarking SFEs is just more of the comp plan. It's not just water. That's more of the total comp plan is, is growth. And we kind of, we've been talking, uh, um, a strategy for the complex, cause it's statutory, we have to redo that, right? Um, and it never really gets changed. And then we have all these other like, you know, the. The Water Resource Master Plan and the Trails Plan and all these other transportation plans underneath that we always visit. Um, so instead of spending. Insane amounts of money for a whole full comp plan with some consultant, we structured this kind of umbrella. More visionary as of things, the other plans then feed into that. Um, and we use that as, as our guide and then we can update that vision. The vision shouldn't change that much, right? We all live here, we still do, but other people come, people go, so it'll adapt a little bit. Um, so that's kind of what we're thinking. And it makes sense. I mean, it really does. We haven't had, well, I'm gonna say, in my opinion, a comp plan that really stood out to me. You know, they, everyone I've seen was an abad- adaptation of the previous one. And it took numbers from the previous one and directions from the previous one and go, wait a minute, that, that was how long ago? And it's still being used today. Not saying there ain't good stuff in there. But does it apply? And especially today. It's, today is really, really wild. Thoughts trustees on an action that you'd think maybe? And, and Steph isn't necessarily asking for anything immediately tonight, but is there something you would like to move on?
I think you nailed it, the bang for the buck. What is it with the rate study and what, what? Maybe we could contemplate outcomes, seeking conservation, you know, uh, through the rate study. Not quite sure how to, how to phrase that properly, but if conservation is the outcome. And we're gonna charge more for more water use, that, that might be a good, good spot to. Start figuring out how to curb water use or fund water expansion at least.
And that was talked about years ago, about a tiered rate. And nothing ever, we never pursued it, I guess we'll put it that way. I was, I was gonna say nothing came of it. We just never pursued it.
And I know we, we talked at the water tour, um, with. In the electric industry, they've gone to AMI, these automatic metering information systems where you can tell. You know, you can tell that your refrigerator is, when you adjust the, the, the temperature on your refrigerator because you're. Anyway, you could dial in what data is being read. And I think that water is moving that direction as well, or we can tell that your toilet's been running or whatever. And, and we might be able to, I don't know, help people, help people help us, um, if we can dial that in just a bit.
And, and I will say, I went in Saturday morning and minded run all night. There you go. Well, there's that bill.
Down the drain.
Just like that, you know, and if you had that system, I don't know how it works or anything, but a little alarm could have gone off and said, hey, yo. Bust down there, you're gonna save. Dollars in my mind, but water. In this aspect, how much water did you just pour on the ground? That's, that's kind of silly.
Yeah.
So anyway, motion, if we want one, a direction at this point?
I just had a question then, if it's, um, like agreeing with, uh, uh. Trustee, uh, but also the thought of, um, if we could, it'd be great to find out, you know, what we could do with conservation, but. Um, just tying back to the original comp plan and whatnot, and I understand not revamping the whole thing that totally, like, I get that, but. The last time it was done, I mean, we've gone now through pandemic and growth here has been, I think, decent, well. I haven't been here as long as most, oh, probably everybody in this room. So, so I don't have too much to stand on in terms of a. Something to say, but I, I, I do believe that growth here is happening quickly and with the pandemic. That's, that's why I would lean more for more than just. That like, see about conservation, but to look into how quickly are we growing in that sense? How quickly ha- has. Have all these things happened? What has the pandemic do, uh, created more people moving out of cities, coming to mountain towns to work remotely? And though conservation is great, uh, for different reasons, I still think even with that in place, we should have some idea of. How far we really want that to go with how fast things are increasing in terms of, um, people moving. So I don't know how to tie that into anything, and you guys might disagree, but I would, I would want to also have some. Study, research, whatever included with that, if that's possible. That probably wasn't clear, but hopefully somebody followed a little bit.
So, sorry, can I ask? Are you looking for data around how quickly water demand has been growing? Or are you looking for maybe more, more definition on this whole idea of a comp plan update? Like, what are we talking about?
I mean, I guess, kind of.
Or both?
Kind of both, cause I mean, I, I don't know to the extent of how much it has grown through the pandemic and everything like that, but I think we're going to continue to see that growth. And I think conservation is good and we should think about that, but I also think we should think about, well, how much, how quickly are we going to. See more and more people coming here because of the effects of the pandemic and things like that. So I think that's a, that's changed a lot, whether you like it or not. It's changed a lot. And so having an idea of what that future looks like, um, might have an effect on the current plan that we have. Does that make sense?
Well, it does make sense. I think Devin's gonna, wants to say something here in a minute too, but it makes, uh, a ton of sense, which is. Exactly why we're bringing this, because we had, we see where it's been, where it's going, and. It, that's why, and, and in April, there's a whole bunch of new board members, right? And so if we can have some of these conversations now and some of the conversations later, we can kind of keep that going. And it's important, that's why. I mean, we can bring you some of that, but that's exactly why we're bringing all of this stuff now. It's like, dude. And, and you pointed out, Devin, go ahead, Devin.
Yeah, I was just wanting to agree with that the water rate study is something that I feel is super important. Especially with focuses on conservation. Um, you know, I see a lot of people in town have lawns and. We live in a high desert and that just seems like a, like a weird alternate reality that. We're living in, obviously I love grass, but I thi- I, I'm, I'm just wondering if there's any kind of incentive. For development, uh, tied to conservation that we could figure out, um. You know, I don't like the idea of limiting development, but if we're able to encourage development where they're using, you know, landscaping and. Uh, conservation in mind with like appliances and, uh, building, if there is a. Way to develop in that direction, that would be exciting and good for water. That's all I got.
Thank you, Devin. I can remember a graph and, and I wished I, I'd thought of it sooner. I'd go back and see if I could find it and it was the. And it was on our last, I think it was a rate study or something, and it showed where the graph was going up and then where the two were gonna meet. At the current growths. And, you know, if you, is that the guy right? Put that on your screen up there.
The updated version of that's in our water.
Yes, yeah. And you know, that plan was based on X growth. And then what you're talking about, now we have this other graph that's based on the current growth and you go, this is what we were deal, this is what we looked at before. And we go, oh, you know, we're comfortable. We know by such and such time we have to do something. Now that, I, I mean, you could take that, squish that graph. That's going back to what you're talking about, the growth we've experienced the past two to three years. When they expedited everything, which is crazy. Uh, I, I think, and, and I'm hearing the water rate study. Quick and easy. And I'm not saying quick and easy, but we'd have to put some money towards that. Yep. So there'd be some kind of budget adjustment for that. Um, was that the ten?
No.
No, you don't have that number yet.
Okay. Uh, we, we, we've got a quote back from Wright Water, um, and we would look at a couple of other firms to see.
So we want, and, and what we're looking for now is a direction for staff, if the trustees want to make a direction at this point in time.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I agree with Devin to a point, but I disagree a little bit too. Um, our, our parks are usually pretty beautiful. It takes a lot to maintain them and they are not designed. For the desert, um. As water increases, it should increase the more you use. I agree with that. But I don't want it to be so cost prohibitive that people quit watering their trees. Um, when we went to water meters, you could look at the houses on my block. And some of the elderly people that probably could have watered their trees and they still would have been using the minimum amount of water. Their trees died. Um, people coming to our town, they look at it, they see that it's pretty. If you drive down, uh, up and down, looking at houses, looking for places to live in our town. And over half the houses has a weed front yard. Uh, their backyards are weeds too. Water is vital. It's very important that everybody have it to use, but. Um, if you go too conservative, the town's not gonna be as pretty. I really think that could become an issue. And, um, the tree board, um, getting people. To water their trees some is an issue. We don't. Want Buena Vista to be total desert.
There's a, I mean, obviously there's, there's some kind of happy medium there and I, I don't know what that answer is. I guess I do, uh, because it was presented to me by someone and they said, well, if you got money, you always have water. Well, that's a interesting statement in it. My water bill quadruples in the summer. And I have nearly, my lawn isn't as big as that right there. It's all trees. Choice. That's your choice.
Um, something that we're working on with, um, our technical manual, our standard specs and, and some, some of the things that were. Uh, the farm is a really good example. So when we looked at the engineering for the turf and looked at the turf and face one. Look at soil amendments. So we, our problem here is, you're absolutely right, we're, we're, you know, we, we don't have topsoil. And so we don't have any moisture retention capabilities with our, with our soils. We, we struggle with our parks as soon as we. You know, have a bad sprinkler or something breaks and B field's a good example and it takes us weeks to recover, you know. Uh, or days to recover anyways, but one thing I think you can, you know, piggyback on is something that we can definitely implement once we start looking at conservation plans is. Is, um, if you want a grass yard, maybe there's, uh, you know, uh, there's a requirement to bring in X amount of topsoil. And soil amendments for moisture retention properties. And maybe there's a, a designed seed spec that we want, so. Um, a higher altitude fescue that is more drought resistant and that doesn't need as much water or they make fescue blanks. But I think that's one big thing that I'm seeing here, you know, um, you know, we, yeah, exactly, right? It, it takes a lot of water to keep our yards green because our soil strength so, so easily, so quickly. You don't have anything holding that moisture in. We don't have good. Bed and night or any clay or any topsoil, that's, that's naturally there. And, you know, if anybody wants a grass yard, but. You know, think about, you know, what, what, what it takes to keep that grass healthy. Just, just saying, I think it's something that, you know, we're working on, um.
It's, it is funny because people up here call topsoil and I go, no man, that's dirt. That is rocks, man. Uh, just a couple of things and then, uh, to rephrase what I've heard. So with the water rate study, there's the monthly rates, that kind of thing, tiered rate. But there's also, um, the system, um, development fee, you know? Um, where that should be, and there's also the water dedication fee, where as you remember, we just kept it that forty-five hundred to start, knowing that this is coming. Um, and when we did a rate study before, it came back to be like, like our system investment fee should be, I mean, this was in. Two thousand eight or something, it should be ten thousand dollars and everyone should already be paying fifty plus bucks base for. Per month or whatever these fees were, and we said, we can't do that. So we, we kept it, kept it down and, you know, increased a little. It doesn't mean that just because the study says it should be this much, that we have to do that much. You can. Roll back whatever's good for the community, but we know what we're doing and we know kind of, kind of why, so. Um, so I'm hearing Duff, the, we want the water rate study, yes. Maybe start thinking about a comprehensive plan and getting, or at least some visioning kinds of discussions happening. Um, thinking about conservation in a, a little more robustly. Coming. And the other things we're just exploring, um. Now there are, like the second question, we're getting that February, the second slide, the, some of this stuff like town. The staff have to have, um, some direction as we move forward because we need that, we need to know what we're doing. Um, so we provide input and our own opinions and stuff, but it's really. Give you guys the, the, the data and the outline for you to fashion that. So something I look forward to in February. It, it is, are those, is that generally what I'm hearing?
That or trustees?
I have another question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. The, with the, um. The carbonite street, um, plan, well, I know the minimum sixty-five, but those taps, are they accounted for already? Or would that be? Okay.
Be taking those out of the available.
Of the available.
Okay. That's, okay, cool.
Yeah, and, and, and maybe Gina, it might be useful for all of you all, maybe I can. Give a little rundown of some of the numbers of people talking about developing things and you get an idea.
That'd be really helpful.
As SFEs are.
How quick they're going.
Question. And, and that's a good way to put it. We're being talked about right now. Um, I know that was something you pushed forward, Joel, going back that. We wanted current numbers to keep current.
Yeah, yeah, and we have.
It was, yeah, that, that wasn't being done before. So whatever you get now is gonna be a good number. It's gonna be very current and it's gonna be very helpful. So going back to, um, I'm always wanting to. I hate to say hurry up things. I would love to get together before February on that, but that's not my choice. I think going back to slide one, and I think what Joel reiterated was basically what we were talking about. ASAP, do water, water rate. We need to find out that part of it because that will give. Then we can take those numbers and start talking about whether, how we can conserve. And one thing, and I did, I didn't think about this till just now, but we also talked about when we did the water rate that seniors would have. Yeah. That we talked about discount for seniors.
Yep.
You know, that was something that we talked about way back when, was how to make it palatable for everybody. So that's, they're not forgotten, Cindy, I guess, best way to put it. Um, and then we can start, I think one will guide us in another direction, if that makes sense. Uh, if the study, we go with the study, the study will guide us to go, oh, we need to look at conversation, conservation or. And it's about time we looked at comp plan and. And started tightening it up or something, if that makes sense. So that a direction for staff?
I think so.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Make the motion to do what Duff just said.
I wrote it down.
What, as interpreted by Phil.
So I'll take the second.
All second.
Thank you.
So much you said.
I know, I was really waiting. I'm like, I guess it was that bad. I don't know what you wrote down, but it was bad. Further discussion. Oh, in favor, say. Not going to do a roll call on that. I think we're, we know we have a, we have to look at water seriously.
Bring some conversations back, thank you.
Thank you, Joel. We've got a lot of good stuff coming up. This is just the start of it. There's some good things happening. It's scary, but there's some good, oh, no, a public hearing, oh my god.
Bathroom break real quick?
Okay, let's do, let's, let's, that's for, let's go five. Means nine fifty-seven by my part. I'm going to sit here and whack it all night long. I know where you were going.
I'm slow, sorry. Oh, there we go.
Where were you at?
I don't know where you were.
Next item on the agenda. Is a public hearing. Public hearing, twenty-two town budget of Buena Vista. Board will hold a hearing on the proposed twenty-two budget. To discuss budget requests. Public hearing and hear from staff first.
Mayor, we'll give you the option. Would you like to take, go through public? And then we could jump, because we're going to.
Do that because then that way staff can just flow. Thank you very much. Let's go to public comment. Is there anyone out there signing up?
I'm not seeing anybody raising their hands. Don't say anything.
Okay. Close this portion of the public. Hearing for public comment. So now we will hear from staff.
Some of the highlights and then we'll jump into the.
I, I again drew the short straw and I go last. So, wake up, and here we go. So we made the change in the budget for the ten thousand dollars for the envisioned. Fire mitigation contribution. That, that was in the budget before the night was over, by the way. The police admin has been changed from part-time to full-time. And the sales tax has been updated for the most recent month that we received in October. Which was for. July. And, and then I've updated the funds balance spreadsheets. To remove the carryover duplication that we discussed in the last meeting. And with that.
I guess I would just add that you have included all of the funds in the spreadsheet format that's posted.
Invitations to review water story. Airport Conservation Trust Fund have been sent to the mayor and board of trustees. That's a lie. You're going to get those in the morning.
The slow, that's snail mail.
Yeah, that's right. But yes, and then you'll be able to go into all of them. So what we wanted to do was to. Kind of give you a refresher course and for Gina, a quick and dirty tutorial of Claire Gove. And encourage you guys to make your comments. Peruse the budget and, and carry on the conversations about line items. We've already gotten some comments from Libby, so I know she remembers. And we'll just.
Do those.
From here.
I've been in there, I didn't see any comments.
Comments. It doesn't violate any sunshine rules or anything, right? I mean, it's just comments on. Claire Gove about her thoughts on the budget.
Correct.
Right.
It's not a, you're not asking, you're, you're not having a conversation.
Okay.
You're putting an input of a comment about something or a question about something.
It's asked for.
Yeah.
I, but in light of that, I would encourage trustees not to use that tool to have a conversation.
I can't find the word.
Yes. So great to post questions, comments, and then staff can reply to it. And then other trustees can kind of see that, right?
Yeah, you get to see what's going on.
Yeah, I can see that.
I can see what other people have said.
Okay, so quickly jumping in here, so you, I think everybody, not, maybe not. Maybe not everybody signed it. So you'll get an invitation, you'll create an account or create your password. You'll sign in on this, this top page here, sign in page. And I'll go away. When you get in, you will come to a screen that looks sort of like this. You will probably see capital budgeting.
Yeah, well, maybe.
We'll focus on operational. So you'll see this operational budgeting over to the left. Click on that. And when you do. You will see the list of funds that you have view access to. So as Michelle stated, we started with the general fund and capital improvement, car, yeah, capital improvement. General fund. But then you'll, you'll have invitations to see all of these. So to go into one of these funds, let's pick on the general fund, we'll go on to edit.
I know you can't screw it up, Dave. Give me a chance. No, you are always concerned that you're going to screw it up.
Yeah.
Telling you you can't.
I'm going to minimize the, the screen over here. So it'll give you some, some high level numbers when you first get in here. It'll show you the total, total amount of expenditures, total amount of revenue. And then where that puts us in terms of whether.
It lost.
Surplus or deficit.
It should pop up now. There it is. It did go quick, but that's okay.
So down here, if you scroll down, this is where you can go in and see all the detail. And there's two tabs, expenditures and revenues, okay? And from here, you can expand and then things are categorized into kind of high level, not quite at a department level, but. A, I don't even know what we call these things. They're like high level groupings.
Yeah.
Right. So for example, general administration, well, that includes several departments. So once you expand that, you'll be able to see down at the department level. And then you can say, okay, let's go underneath that department. And then it's categorized by other expenses, equipment or transfers in this case. And you can expand that, and this is where you'll see down at the. Accountable, you'll see the various account IDs. Again, if you look, this, this is the same data that's in the spreadsheet format. This is just put in a, in a way where you can, you can kind of customize it. We do recommend the first time you go in here to go ahead and customize your display. So that you can get rid of columns that are redundant or not needed.
Yeah.
Or add ones that are of interest.
Where did you go to do that, Philip?
There is customized display.
Oh, got you. See it, yep.
Okay. So these are the ones that I selected, and, and this one right here is key. Because there's, there's various full year twenty-two columns. The one that shows you the latest and greatest, what we have loaded, is this FY twenty-two, twenty-two in progress.
Progress, not process.
Not. Process. So we'll send an email reminder about this, but that's, that's very important to make sure you see the real numbers for full year twenty-two.
And so, so you can turn off twenty-twenty and it would just give you more detail in the whole white screen.
Yeah, yeah. And that, that's the problem with this is that your screen's this wide. And with all the columns, it's this wide, so you're scrolling this way and you're scrolling this way and stuff.
And, and that's what makes it hard to find comments and.
You can turn off that account ID too, because that's not really very useful.
Yeah, for trustees, account ID is, is probably not something you want to look at. Something I very much want to look at, but yeah, that's, that's another one you could get rid of. But you can also pull up past year actuals.
All the way back to ten.
As I saw that, which is, which is interesting.
Is the percent of budget a very good? Okay, I'm leaving that. I just wondered, is it?
I'll show you what it looks like here.
Sometimes it doesn't mean anything. You know, it's just a weird number. You go, oh, okay.
Because it gives you a percent increase.
Yeah.
Prior budget.
Oh, is that what it does?
But that's without.
Doesn't give you percent of budget.
Yeah, that's the whole budget, I would think.
Okay.
Cindy's writing these down, so I'm trying not to close this too fast. You good? Okay.
I'm like practically doing this as you're talking. It's great.
Good. I close the screen?
Good.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a note in Furniture Fixtures Community Center.
So what you can do is you can scroll over and again, here is, here's your FY twenty-two in progress. These are the numbers. Okay, so make sure those, those are the ones you're looking at. And Duff, were you saying something?
I was in Furniture and Fixtures of Community Center.
You're going to make me jump up to Community Center?
There's a green, green box.
Yeah.
So it must be, it looks like the correction. It's what it looks like.
Gotcha. So let's, we talked about beautification, so let me pick on there. So, so, so here's their, here's the budget number that they have. You can see that it is an increase from, from last year. Over here, since they did submit a budget document, you can see with the paper clip, this is, this is what they presented to you tonight. So that's stored in there. It's actually just their proposed project with this budget, but. So you'll see green lights up when there's something there. And so this, this little. Conversation bow, thank you. You can see if there's been correspondence about this, and this is a great area to put in a question. So like Libby and I have been going back and forth the last couple of days.
And you, you can go back and leave those questions, so you're going to have to re-ask them.
Yep. So great place to, to put in a quick question.
Once you submit a question, you can't get rid of it.
Good. Watch your language. So. So that's a good way to get a quick question in there. A, a lot of times we use this, this little short explanation, little sticky looking box here as notes. So if there's a little more explanation, we'll try to, we try to put that in there. So if that's. So if there's a little more explanation, we'll try to, we try to put that in there. So if that's, that's green, that's a good thing to look at. There's also itemized. We will use, okay, our lease, our lease payments right here for public parking. So you'll see that one's green. And you'll see that we've itemized. So one's a payment to the school for their, for their property and one's, we're not going to. Okay. So good information to find that way. Let's see, let me pick on one other one.
Calling the PE, Dean made a lot of really good notes.
He did a great job. So under public safety, and there's been a lot of change in this area, right? We changed our fire department. So you, you'll see a lot of change under public safety, under police. Let's see, other expenses. So Dean did a fantastic job. I mean, he has, he has really itemized a lot of.
If you look at their lease, I think that's where I had the question.
Yeah. All right. So look, wow, almost a 600% increase on their, on their building lease payment. What is going on? Go in here and look. So what we've done is we have loaded the COP, full year COP payment as what it would cost at our current projected cost for the new police station. What this does is it shows you that we can contain this COP payment in our ongoing operating budget. Okay, so, so that is loaded into the budget. Let's see, we also under our fire department. We don't have a department anymore, so you won't see salaries, wages, anything like that. We do continue to pay one more year of liability insurance.
Since that's figured out last year.
But then we have our payment to Chaffey County Fire as a professional fees and outside services. And again, there's an explanation breakdown of how all that's calculated. If you care to see that. Okay.
If it's red, it just means that the listing doesn't balance with what's in the.
Yeah. So this one's 52 cents off from, you know, his itemized breakdown and what he's doing wrong by that. So that red just means that the itemization is not quite lined up, but no, no big deal.
So if you don't like scrolling up and down a lot, because I noticed on my laptop, it's really small. It's about this big. You can go to the top right of the what, where Devon is.
Way up here.
Where Devon is.
There's those, those three. And the eyeballs mean you can see it and cross through it means that you've taken it out. But then, then your list gets fatter. So you can see our stuff without scrolling as much. So then the revenues. We, we've been continuously updating until adoption will update this. The town and county sales tax numbers. And we have a note in there.
I do. I leave a note every time we update it. So it's actually through August. We loaded August actuals.
Okay, yeah, yeah, you're right.
So that gets updated as we go. Yeah. Questions?
Any, any questions, any? Anything you didn't know already, Libby?
It's pretty neat system, I think.
I think it is too.
Yeah.
Last year it was really.
Our beta testing personnel budgeting module for them. Right now, I'm, I'm busy loading that right now. So we can have all the budgeting stuff in the same.
Yeah.
Think you did fill in all this information. Well, I sent them reports and they input, they uploaded it. So it wasn't as bad as it looked.
Oh, man.
It's just so much simpler or so much easier to me than the looking at the paper.
Yeah.
I mean.
Because it's supposed to be attached right after my report and those can make your eyes proud.
Yeah. When, I was going to say prior to this, whenever you did red letter or something like that on the spreadsheets, you could, you could use them. Prior to that, you were just looking at numbers, just a mass of numbers. You just couldn't grasp anything.
So I do want to highlight a few things because as you'll, I mean, as you'll see in there, our expenses are going up and our revenues are going up. But I do want to highlight a few of the key changes year to year that you'll see. So one is our salaries and benefits. Overall, we're up 8.32%, which isn't bad considering we're, we're doing salary adjustments. Health insurance, those things always go up from year to year. And we're also adding head staff and police department, public works. Expanding rec a bit. I think I captured everything there.
Our health insurance only went up 2%.
Yeah, that was good. That helped.
Oh, that's good. The fire went out.
So salary, but salaries and wages is, is one of those things. But we also are spending a lot more in terms of capital expenditure. So if you go down and you can see our transfers are up. We're spending $350,000 more in transfers to our capital improvement fund and the airport. And so you can see the breakdown here of what that looks like. We did zero that out because it's contained in the other line item now. So, so we're, we're sending nearly $560,000 to the capital improvement fund. And then 120,000 to the airport fund. And the airport does have some significant capital projects lined up for next year. So that's why that's a little bit higher than, than what it typically is. And then the third thing is our COP payment for the new police station is loaded in there, 212,000. So those are some of the bigger hitters, changes from year to year that are driving these numbers. I, I'm going to stop there because we could talk on and on and on about budget, but.
Oh, but the, the COP payment is for the whole year?
That's a full year payment. Again, it's, it's kind of a, it's, it's an overstatement.
Yeah.
But it's to demonstrate that we can afford this level of, of COP payment. So we could back that out as we get into next year and do a budget change and shift those funds to something else if the board would like to. But it's a nice placeholder for now.
Yeah, okay.
Questions? Go ahead.
I just want to say like, and, and I'm, I'm glad this is happening, the see more budget for more staff in different departments because since I've, I know I've only been here for a short time, but the one, the current thing I hear every single meeting is how is that like? You guys are being super hard and there's only limited amounts of a, a time and people and, and even space. And so to see that growing is important to me. I think people are our greatest infrastructure. So we do have the ability to bring staff in. I think it's important that we do as the town is growing and while the town's growing, we also obviously need people to support that. And so I'm a big proponent of if it's possible to add more staff in the areas you feel you need it, I would be all for that. So.
And one thing to you, and, and it was pointed out to me early on, any, any increase in staffing is continuous. You know, so you buy a cop car, it stops right there. You bought a cop car. And so that's the way it was put in perspective that, yeah, we can add five employees. Well, that's that's $300,000. You know, just like that. You go, wow, wait a minute. So it, it's a major impact. And that's why it takes so much to add employees because it hits so hard for a long period of time.
And it's not just the wage, it's the health, it's the.
Yeah. That's why I called it 300,000. Otherwise I'm coming to work for town. Just saying. But no, it's, but that's, I agree totally.
When we have the ability.
To increase. We have to increase. Look how much town's increased. Yeah, have to.
So if you scroll down to page 138 in the packet. That is the revised fund balance estimates per the adjusted budget. And that's with the things that are going to be come from fund balance next year. It's going to be postponed till next year. That's what those items take and out of the expenses. And the revenues, if there's a corresponding grant. So that, and then the the care, what you carry forward from one year to the next is the ending balance becomes the beginning balance for the next year. Okay, that's obvious, but my ending balance is smack in the middle of this spreadsheet. So it's, it's the adjusted ending fund balance as of 123121. And it it's before the table reserve and the loan covenant column. And so that number is the number of dollars we have. Now, what you do with it is, is what you know, is, is what the other columns are about. And then it ends up leaving a 1.6 million dollar unrestricted fund balance as of the end of the year. Okay, the next page is a violet color is the projected fund balances for the proposed budget. And that's with that's with the carryforwards in place. They weren't added in because they were already there. And so then you see that it ends up with an unrestricted fund balance of $156,000 negative. Now, we still have three, four, five months still to register sales tax. And it's been a surplus every month. And then in itself may erase that. But if, if worst case scenario, if it's, it remained at 156 negative. Then, then the board could come back and say, well, you know, that 27% reserve. We have 1.4 million in that. We could take some of that reserve and allocate it to the unrestricted. I mean, that, that 27% reserve is for you guys to determine what the emergency is, basically. What, what the reserve is held for. That's on the determination. So honestly, I, I think that the PD is very doable.
Yeah, and there's other things going on, right? So we, what we haven't factored into this is the sale of the fire station, the sale of the building lot. There are other things that will factor into building that fund balance backup. But it's, it's, it's a kind of a balance where the board's comfortable spinning that down to reduce the COP amount. Or keep that at an amount that everybody's comfortable with too. But it, it so much impacts this the fund balance projections from month to month. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But this is, I mean, we've been hearing scuttlebutt in the community and everything about how we have this much surplus. Why don't we spend it on that? Why are we holding on to it? It's just this is the reason is we've been building up unrestricted reserves for a project like the PD station. So, so that we don't have to go and ask another tax question on a ballot. We can pay for it in-house. So.
Were you here when we, let's say we, the board decided we weren't spending enough money?
I think that was right as I came on board.
Yeah, that we were holding too much money.
Yeah.
And so therefore that's where the 27% came from. Because the board started spending it down and I'm not disagreeing because money wasn't being spent. There was a ton of money in the bank.
Right.
None making money, by the way. None that was drawing interest. Michelle took care of that. We put some over there. It's making some money. But we weren't spending quote taxpayer money as a board. And that had been going on for years. Phil remembers this too. That's where the board agreed to hold that 27%. We would only spend down so far. And make sure that we kept that 27% reserve. That's where that came from.
And that was a DOLA recommendation? The, the 27% was not just out of thin air?
I looked at some of the research that Michael did and it is all over the board.
Everywhere.
Accounts. And honestly, the smaller you are, the more you need to have in reserve. Because if an emergency happens, it's the same price for them as it is for you. And if you don't, if you have only this size population, you still have to cover it. So 27% seemed realistic for a small and GFOA recommends between 20 and 30% for, for small communities. And then places like Denver would be a little bit smaller percentage. But it's a smaller percent of a, a much larger number.
And I think that's what you're recalling, David, is that it was that, that recommend, yeah.
Yeah. I know that there was quite a bit deliberation of whether it's 25 or 30 or whatever.
Right.
And it wasn't just an arbitrary number.
Yeah, it wasn't something that was just pulled out of the air by any means.
So, so ultimately, the board at the time decided that 27% reserve was was good for this, this town. And you can change that also if you decide. But as far as unrestricted fund balance, that's really kind of the savings account. And if that grows and grows and grows and grows and you're not aiming it at something. That's when the citizen rate gets upset. Just to save it for the sake of saving it is, is not good stewardship. Saving it towards a project. Even if you don't really know what the project was at the time. It was fire department, then it turned into the police department. But we knew we had some big, big ticket items coming down the way.
And, and as a recent history example, the town decided in 2017 ish, yeah, boy, it's been five years. To spend that unrestricted down to zero and we built the new ball field, the project land swap with the school. Our contribution to the building the new baseball field spent that fund balance down to zero.
Which ended up not being zero because the surplus caught up with it.
It built back up.
And that's why we project 3%. We do conservative so that we know that we potentially we cover what's here, but we also potentially we're going to put some money in the bank every year for those projects.
Let me, let me jump into one more thing and then we can move along here. I, I did want to point out, the question came up about the water treatment plant. So in the water fund right now, we have loaded a scenario. It's not the scenario, it is a scenario. And you will see a projected deficit. So what we have in here is a scenario that assumes several smaller capital projects, including resurfacing, I think Shawnee got some recent.
The tank?
The tank resurfacing. I think it's right up here. Yeah, recoding. So several smaller projects, including well, this is well through, it should be well number four. So we've got several capital projects in there, but it also assumes a $6 million project with revenues coming in at, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was spending, I think it was getting $1 million of grants through DOLA and some other sources. And it's all in the revenue side.
It is in the revenue.
Yeah. Yeah, $1 million in state and local grants, spending the fund balance down. Basically, this would be deficit spinning into the fund balance for the water fund. It also includes on the expenditure side, what a loan of whatever the balance is there, six minus one minus 1.5, whatever it is. Uh, so three and a half million dollar loan out of the water fund is loaded in here under the debt service principle. You can see
Yeah.
That we've loaded, that's what a a uh a debt payment would look like on something like that. So it is a scenario, it would basically be saying, hey, let's build out that full eye infiltration gallery only kind of project. Just to give you an idea of what that what impact that would have on our water fund. I think we're gonna come back to you with some various proposal ideas um and how numbers relate to that. But when you, when you look in the water fund, you you'll see that loaded. It's not the recommendation, it's just giving us a ballpark idea.
Something to work with.
Yeah.
Now, where did, where did that?
The numbers that are on the fund balance spreadsheet, so then if you go back to that violet spreadsheet.
Yes.
The uh projected fund balance um is still a million dollars at the end of the year with unrestricted being eight hundred thousand at the end of twenty twenty two with that being in in the spreadsheet, so.
So so it was implied that that money came from the COVID grant? That the money was being used from that COVID money was?
Yeah, the ARPA funding, yeah, we.
I don't think we've put ARPA funding.
I I did load three hundred thousand of our six hundred and eighty thousand dollars towards the water project. Water and and wastewater, stormwater are one of the four main categories that they say.
To use that, that you can use that for. Well, and I remember that early, early on that that's what, I think it was Boulder or Runfield or somebody was saying, hey, we got shovel ready. We want that grant money for our shovel ready water project.
I mean, if you, if you want, if you wanted to make the case that COVID is driving more people here or people are using water, therefore, water should be dealt with just as much as.
There's an argument either way, if you want to go that way, I guess best way to go.
Staff is still blaming it. Uh, we, we, we look at utilizing some of that funding towards the housing, the carbon industry project as well. But we are saying that this.
But it's a mix.
It's a mix.
It's mixed. Thank you.
The burden of eligibility per is easier to prove on the water project than the housing project than the police station than, you know, it's, it's there's things you have to do to prove that it's eligible for that.
Oh, got you. Okay, okay. The criteria is just simpler.
Yeah, yeah, and the water project is a slam dunk. The housing project is a little harder to prove, but not as bad as you know, as waiting is.
Or a police station or or something, something, something.
Although I could prove the police station too.
That was a water.
Keep going.
I know it's late there.
More clarifying questions for staff?
I'm awake.
Wake.
As a public hearing. Clarifying questions for staff? Anything else you have to bring forward to F this point? Thank you. So I close this portion of the public hearing to um interaction of the trustees comments. Any concerns or a motion to continue to the November ninth meeting?
I'll make that motion to continue till the November ninth meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, thank you. Means we've already approved that. Do we have to do this, Jeff? I suppose so.
Yes, you do.
Thank you. Um, all in favor, Sally?
Hi.
Hi.
Alright.
Thank you, Devon. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is, and good stuff, staff, by the way. Budget is so much different than it used to be. I say that every year. Town administrator.
We'll keep it brief here. Uh, the only thing I want to point out is under project updates. There's a lot of information in there, so if you have any questions about any of this, let me know. But um, one that's a little different than uh, the rest, it's first time I've added it in here. So we currently have an IGA set up with the county for building department services. And uh, that IGA automatically renews every year at the start of the year. And there is a clause, a renewal clause in there that allows um for cancellation or or written uh cancellation thirty days prior to that renewal. And so uh, staff is proposing that we spend a little bit of time here because there's nothing else going on, right? Uh, a little bit of time, uh, just exploring what industry standards are out there regarding building department services outsourced by municipalities. Um, just as a good check in to make sure that our current agreement with the county is still competitive. And um, we have, we have heard of of some potential opportunities that we'd like to just kind of discuss with the county and do a little bit of research on, and that has to do with revenue sharing for permit fees, things like that. So uh, that's our plan unless the board has any concerns with that. We just don't want anybody to be caught off guard by us exploring.
Trustees?
Sounds prudent to me.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Any, any questions about any of the other content there?
Kick off the meeting on the rodeo grounds, that's cool. Process completed. Any other questions? Oh, Arizona Trail is almost done.
The Boys and Girls Club, that should be an interesting presentation.
Yes, meeting tomorrow.
At five o'clock, or it starts at five thirty, I guess. It starts at five.
Any other questions for Philip? Next town treasurer.
Thank you, Philip.
Yes.
Okay, in the interest of not putting you all asleep again with the numbers. And see that we had, we did get the August sales tax and we just keep adding to year-to-date surplus. The local and remote sales tax breakdown has been populated into the August columns. Town expenditures, um, there were none over, there were no checks written. Because John went on vacation and she wrote, she did all the check write before she went. And then there was none while she was gone. Um, what is in there is uh attributable to the payroll for that year, for that week. She did payroll too, but it hit during this period. Um, so I I take this opportunity to really scramble your brain with a bizarre situation comes up every eleven years.
Oh, yeah.
Their um town's budget and salary and compensation schedules are based on a bi-weekly payroll, twenty-six of them. Every eleven years, there's twenty-seven payrolls. And this kind of hit us and um if we pay staff on December thirty first, which would be the twenty-seventh payroll, the next paycheck wouldn't be until uh January, what, fourteenth, thirteenth? Uh, if we, if we pay them on the thirty first, we will go over budget. And so Philip and I went round and round and round. Well, what do we do about Joseph? He wasn't here for the whole thing. He should get paid on the thirty first and and um, you know, so.
Who won?
Okay, we'll bring it to the board. You guys decide. If we staff on the thirty first, it's a budget adjustment of about thirty thousand dollars.
Well, here's where I landed on it. We're paying our employees every two weeks for for time worked every two weeks. If if we, if we pay on the thirty first, that's holding true to that. If we held true to how we budgeted for this year, which was just strictly based on twenty-six pay schedules, twenty-six pay periods. We're underpaying, we're not, we're, we're not paying for two weeks of work. And she finally hit me with that, like.
That hurt.
That hurt a little, but she's right, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's a weird, weird situation and we checked with other municipalities and this is how they're handling it. But it doesn't.
Or they don't know and they realize after the fact.
That they're over budget. Yeah.
Oh, and then catch it up. I mean, we've already, what, we've already done what, three hundred thousand this meeting? Another thirty.
Tonight is the budget adjustments? Okay, yeah.
We've done quite a bit. I mean, I, you know, trustees.
You have to pay the employees. You want them to come to work.
Yeah.
I was hoping that was a motion. Second?
Yeah.
So that was a motion, this is second further discussion. We'll call vote.
Let's see, pay.
Yes.
Let's see the crazy.
Yes.
Let's see, row.
Yes.
Let's see, Swisher?
Yes.
Let's see, Glovey?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
It would be interesting, go to town hall, doors locked. All the top cars are parked out here, nobody's been on. Just saying, uh, anything else? Michelle?
No. Well, you know, you can look at the the graph that everybody holds their breath until it comes out every month, which is on page one forty-four showing August sales tax.
Been incredible, hasn't it?
It has been a good run.
Just interesting. And next month might be interesting too, huh? Okay, uh, planning director. Thank you, Michelle.
Um, yeah, I will also work to keep this extremely short, but please feel free to ask questions. Uh, the primary things that I want to just mention, one, uh, planning and zoning commission has formally approved um, or recommended for your approval, uh, creation of a new zone district called our one point five. Um, this probably be bundled uh with the three other uh, potential zoning changes um to be brought towards or for your consideration all at once. Um, we're kind of looking at the agendas for the rest of this year and maybe eyeing January agendas for these panel uh ordinance recommendations, but these would be public hearings to adjust our code accordingly. So I just want to give you kind of a heads up on that. And then the other uh two items that I just wanted to call out, page one forty-six, if you're back, it's one, um, we, as Sean has mentioned a couple of times tonight, there's a technical manual that you all are probably aware of in the background. It's being built. Um, there's a component of that that is being driven, that will be driven by the planning department around review processes. And process uh improvements or process definitions. So we have kind of rekindled work on that. It had fallen by the wayside for a number of months um, or more, so that's been restarted. Um, and I hope to keep progress up on that. And then um, please keep your eyes out on Monday for the launch of mybv.com. Um, this will be the public engagement portal that I mentioned to you in my previous report. Um, the tech, the URL is gonna be my dashbv.com. It will be linked from our primary website, will be blasted on social media, press release, um, hotline yards. But this will be a a new prime fixture in our website space for engaging community, asking questions, getting feedback, conveying information on a whole host of projects. So really trying to tighten that up this week, get launched on Monday. It will launch with about five or six projects, including the new police station, the water resource master plan, rodeo grounds, master planning, carbon industry developments. Um, again, these are webpages that are dedicated to each of those topics that have built-in tools like surveys or maps or idea walls that allow a community to participate more in those topics. So I look forward to continuing to develop this tool as we move forward. It'll be a robust mechanism for us all to gauge public perceptions, get public input um, and guide a lot of what we do.
Thank you.
You're up.
Questions? All right, Sean.
All right. I'll just, I'll just hit on two things. Um, uh, yeah, we're still holding pretty good at fifty percent unaccounted. Um, I don't care what Redwater says, we're doing okay right now. Um, I'm, I'm, just so you know, I gave them all the information in the water master plan reports. So yeah, anyways, I did a little bit of experiment. Um, I think I'm gonna go ahead and stick with this. We, uh, you know, I I collected a lot more information this month uh from flushing and added a few more things. Um, projecting the meter inaccuracy at the Ivy League pump station that that serves them water. We know that the range is gonna drift once we put the new meter in. Uh, put the construction water usage in there, put the fill station usage in there and put the big flushing number in there. So the flushing number, that's a lot larger than normal. We flushed the fire or or we flushed the water main running to the DOC. So basically from Baylor to the DOC property, so I don't know, half mile stretch of water. So we, we dumped out some H water, got some chlorine residuals, they're ready to go. So that's uh, it's unfortunate that we had to chuck that much water out, but uh we were able to look at a couple of things to get in the vault and, you know, try to do some things, so. And um, the other thing I wanted, um, just just for trustees, you know, looking at development, I put a just kind of a little development tracker for water service lines and water meter installations in there. So you guys can see where we're at so far this year. Not that those are SFEs, but those are water line connections and they're fairly comparable. So that's a comparable number, just depends on what water line sizes we're talking about. So um, I don't want to, I don't want you guys to get the impression that a water service line is an SFE, but forty-eight um, total connections, active connections so far in twenty twenty-one is where we're at. Couple of months left, so probably likely to run around sixty, so. Um, yeah, and kind of some updates on a few, few of the other things that we're working on. So.
I thought fifteen was a good number.
Fifteen's a great number.
Yeah.
Um, I wish, I wish our annual reports would reflect that.
I know.
You know, we had that leak for the first quarter this year and with this big time in June, so that's gonna yeah, you know, we're gonna still have an accounted usage for twenty-one. Maybe it won't be twenty-four, maybe it'll be twenty.
Yeah. Uh, but it's, it's so much improved though. So much improved. Thank you, Sean. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Oh, one less flush though and you'd have made fourteen. Just saved ninety-four thousand gallons.
Cool.
Yeah. I thought my toilet was running. That's a bad one. Um, Philip, are you doing airport or is Jack with us?
Jack's on.
Jack's on.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees. Well, I should say almost good morning. Anyway, uh, so staff, just a couple of things. Chandra's away, your ops officer on a course, she'll be out for the rest of the week, back next week. Um, that's a pretty good course. It gives you everything you want to know about airports. So that'd be a really good mo- uh, force multiplier here. Um, the only other things I'll touch on operation wise, we just finished up with Augusta and Boeing, they were doing the production version of the one thirty-nine. So we think back, you saw that yellow and orange helicopter flying around. It's now painted gray with Air Force colors. They're now in the production phase. They should be back next spring. So um, they're getting ready to take this helicopter over and it'll be replacing the Huey. So it'll go from a AW one thirty-nine to a MH one thirty-nine, American uh configuration. Uh, maintenance wise, well, we just, after about two years, we finally got the front of our building fixed, stucco. Uh, these guys, I have no problems recommending Pikes Peak Construction. They did a fantastic job. Um, you know, you look at it and go, um, it looks, they matched it really well and they fixed up the front and back of our building. So I don't expect we'll have any more leaking problem. We'll just have to do some drywall inside and we'll have a brand new building. So I don't expect we'll have any more leaking problem. We'll just have to do some drywall inside and we'll have a brand new building. Operation wise, I won't get in, we seem to be in a positive. So and you folks can look at the chart, we're doing quite well. And that's about all I have. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Jack. Any questions for Jack? Trustee staff interaction. Thank you, Jack.
You bet.
Joel?
Nope.
Libby?
Nothing in particular, except that the COVID is still around, you know. It's, if you're vaccinated, it's not putting you in hospital or in the grave. But there are twenty-three cases today, I think, in the county. That's it.
You know what section of the county?
Sorry?
You know what section of the county?
It's a mixture. A lot of them are children. Schools.
Dave?
Who, me?
Yeah, you're Dave, right?
I love the building.
How about some midnight?
And many.
Nothing other than, how cool was that tonight? What we did with the carbon industry project? We've been talking about this for years and to finally, you know. Do something that was pretty amazing.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
I'll second what he said. I haven't been around for the past few years. I'm tired of it, but pretty excited about it.
Yeah, it's pretty cool. And you kept getting me with launch. I was thinking of William Shatner, you know, launch, he was gonna launch. Kept launching and then we're going, wow, he's he's going up next. Paula?
I have nothing.
I don't either. It's just kind of flowing right now. It's eleven. Cindy? It all should be like this, actually. Good meetings. Gina?
Um, just two things, kind of quick. First being, just a special thank you to Mika and Joseph. Actually, I was able to chat with both of them. Just more about learning more about housing in the area and the CHA. So just want to thank them for their time with that. And then it's kind of, kind of random, not random, but we all received the that BVBA letter and such. And. As a newer person to the group here. I'm interested in in just simply listening and learning. So I'd like to reach out to them, but I also, you know, in doing so, would. Like to obviously speak with all of you on that, to see your feelings about that. My hope is to obviously just kind of educate myself better on the situation in general and just simply listening, not speaking on behalf of the board or.
Providing any information.
But to learn, it'd be nice to be able to do that with some folks, but if that's not possible because of scheduling, things like that. I would also be happy to do it as kind of, I don't know. Term liaison would even be correct. I know Devon does some stuff, the Meadow group. And so. I guess I'm just trying to learn and listen, but I would like to ask the board their thoughts on that as well because. Can be a sensitive subject.
Any concerns, board?
I don't have a concern with that. I just, I think if you are able to achieve some. Toning down of the animosity that they seem to feel towards the town now could be helpful.
And I would. I guess just my personal would use the term liaison loosely. You're there to listen and learn is just what you said. And and we're not putting you out there as a go-between between town and them. It's just, hey, go see what they got to say and if that makes sense, Dave, thoughts?
Yeah, you're just, they're not a recognized entity. So liaison would be a strong term, but yeah, anyway.
Take that term out.
And another point that I wanted to make, and Paul, I think. Numbers of of. Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, currently we have seven hundred and forty-nine business licenses in town.
Okay, so I think that to me puts in perspective whom we're hearing from. Not that I condemn that, but you know, that's not a majority. If nothing else, we do a survey or something and say, hey, what's everybody else think instead of just this group? Little don't hold. But no, appreciate that. And and not everybody got the letter from my understanding. So I will.
I didn't get it.
Yeah, I'll send it to you.
Staff didn't get the letter either, did they?
No.
The second one did go to my spam.
Oh, did you? Okay.
The first one did not.
Anything else, Gina?
Um, that's that's really it. But like, you know, we're a team here and we vote together on everything. And so. My, like I said, my intent with this is not to create any issues or situations. It's really just to educate myself as. Being new to to a lot, living here for only two and a half years, and so to listen, to learn. I just want to stress that because I don't want. Anybody get the wrong idea or idea or something like that. I just, I want to understand. I can be a good trustee if I can listen. So education support.
So you're practicing.
Yes. Everybody has a voice and it's nice to be heard. But.
Good. Thank you. Devon?
I'm doing okay. It's one AM almost here on the East Coast. I'm doing good. Yep, you're doing good.
Thanks, Devon. Jeff, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I've got a short forty-five minute presentation, if you don't mind. No, I'm good. I I appreciate the the opportunity. Thanks.
Sean, anything you'd like to add?
Just real quick, recognize the water advisory board for all. Amazing. Thursday, we appreciate their help on this. This is the work that we've been working on, twenty twenty-one, water resource master planning and. Our expansion. So it was a great meeting. They did a great job.
Thank you. And and you know, you bring up a good point. I don't think we give recognition to our advisory boards near often enough. They put, they give us all the information we use. Plain and simple. Thank you, Sean. Jack, anything you'd like to add?
I'm muted, Jack.
You're muted, Jack.
Yeah, thanks for the clear gov update, Michelle and Philip, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Jack. Philip?
A great meeting tonight. A lot of, a lot of really important topics and I just proud of this group. Doing the heavy lifting on those topics. The other thing I'll say is yes, advisory boards are amazing. And it's sometimes like these where it really shows. I also want to recognize staff behind a lot of that as well. I don't know if you noticed in the pictures, but. They were talking about the tree. Well, there was somebody hanging off a lift. Doing this around the tree and and that's been multiple staff members. And so I just want to say thank you to staff. For doing a lot of that, that kind of work. Yeah. Risking their lives for the town tree, but also all the liaisons that spend time with our advisory boards. A lot of time goes into that. So.
That's very important.
Yep.
Very important.
That's it.
Very critical. One, and I, something that was brought up, I guess, basically by Eric, we had, what, three? What did he say? Thirty-two hundred, thirty-one hundred, thirty-two, thirty-two? Do we have a parking problem?
It walks to the dinner, so I don't know.
And so let's say a few of them walk. You know, we park, how many people?
Oh, for the dinner, yeah.
Yeah, you know, we, I always think about that and we always go, yeah, parking's a problem, parking problem. And then we have Main Street.
Yeah.
Full, no parking on Main Street, but there's three thousand people there. You know, huh, interesting. There's no parking in town. I just, you know, I don't know why that struck me is that, but it did. Okay, next item on the agenda is, I guess I got everybody. I miss anybody? Next item is executive session. The executive session to consider the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real, personal, or other property pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six, that four oh two. Paragraph four, sub-paragraph eight, potential land exchange. Have a motion?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. People going to executive session? Who's staying? Philip?
Joseph, Joel, Sean.
Hey, legal?
And legal. Sorry, Jeff.
That's right.
Good night, folks.
Hi.
See you, Jack.
Save one of the newspaper writers. Jaffe County Times? Steph March. Okay.
Oh, my goodness. It's a good meeting.